Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 1 Bellar Beach Council Meeting. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to come down. We have a student who's going to help us tonight. Tonight, folks, we have Ryland Aki, who's going to be helping us out over here. He's going to step right out over here. Folks, we started this, as you might guess, with Councilmember Robin Aki visiting his mom. And he's a little nervous tonight, but Ryland's going to be in the second grade, right? And I'm sure he'd like to play baseball. What position? First base, good spot. Might he hit one runs? How he'll be in first base, good spot. And he also is a soccer player, so we wanted to thank him on behalf of the city for getting us going tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. That's for you, Robin. Adam Clark, can you please call her on?
Councilmember Robin Aki?
Here.
Councilmember Rodney?
Here.
Councilmember David Gaddis?
Here.
Councilmember Joey Shirley?
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swob?
Here.
Vice Mayor Levan?
Here.
Mayor Joseph Banza?
Here.
Senator Lynn Reeves?
Here.
Finance Officer Melvin Cruzona?
Here.
Attorney Jackis?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, folks, we are doing something a little different. It really came out of some of our work sessions where we were wondering how to deal with responding to people from the audience who would have questions and comments and stuff. And since the general comments are all together toward the end, because the council, the attorney, the city manager all speaks, we've moved the general comments from the citizens to that spot. So when you address us, if you'll come up to the front here, this is for items that are not on the agenda. If something is on the agenda, you'll have the ability to do that as we're going along. But at the end, we're going to have that happen. And then we're not going to respond to you immediately, right afterward. You're the city manager. Most of the times, it's his responsibility on an item that's raised, and he'll have the opportunity to respond back to you. Or if it's something that he can't do tonight, it'll go as an open item, and it'll be picked up at the next meeting, or he will get in touch with you directly. So that's the way we'll be handling that. So the first item that we have is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes? Mr. Clark?
I would like to amend the agenda to add two items. One is a discussion of the last budget workshop, although it's 6.6. I'd like to add that as an item following the report by the city treasurer, if I could, especially with the residents still in attendance. And the second item I'd like to add is a discussion of the impending Villarblas policy regarding bicycles on sidewalks. The city of Villarblas has our city venture for Lethwaits. I believe a ULL decision was made without consulting the council. Just like to amend it for discussion.
Just to clarify, the budget workshop, the results would be after 3, so we'll say it's item 3.5 then. And then the one on the bicycles, if you have a position, doesn't matter. Put it on number 11.5. You have 11 anyway, so. Okay, so we have two agenda changes, potential changes. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second. Any objection? Or I guess pull in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so both of those will be added. Item 3.5 will be the budget workshop, and 11.5 will be the discussion of the Villarblas bicycle situation.
I would like to amend it or move an item as well. Item number 10, I think we need to move that to our budget work session so that we can look at the funds that are required to the parks and recs against, as well as more data on what they're planning on doing and how to get that money through.
My understanding is that that is a presentation for that very purpose today. That's why that's on here. It's quarterly report, so that's why they're coming here to explain that to us. I think that's part of the presentation. Anyway, it's open for my comments, but do we have a second on that? There being no second, that motion is denied. Any other changes to the agenda? And as amended, we have a... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So we have amended agenda. And then the next item would be the presentation of Penoush Sheriff's Office. Sheriff?
Hello.
Good evening.
As far as your staff for the month of Burgl- there was one burglary in the city. That was a theft of a bicycle from a garage door. I don't believe there was any suspects on that. The other, I believe, that was back in April with the thefts of the items off the beach. You know, that's some subjects that have been concerned. Nothing like that's happened since then. There's two minor crashes in the city, one on the causeway and one back there. That's basically about it, just still addressing these traffic issues.
20 seconds, folks, go forward. Tell the panel this is here. Sheriff, I know, I'm familiar with what happened with the situation with the prior burglaries. I'm not sure if everyone does. Do you mind if I tell everyone?
No.
Okay. We had a situation where there was someone, I guess, going up and down the beach. Correct me if I say anything wrong on this. And they were taking things off people's porches. And Sheriff, I knew that, I had highlighted this the other month because I'd seen two. It's kind of odd for us to even have one, but we had two burglaries, two moraines, and I was inquiring about it. And I was told by the captain that there was going to be some work done on that, some undercover work. They in fact did that undercover work, and they caught the person. So they got the person who was actually, the person who was going in and taking cushions, chairs, umbrellas, things like that, right out of people's backyards and in the condos. So that's unacceptable, and our sheriff did a great job on that, great job undercover work, and we appreciate that. And I know the residents there appreciate it, so that's all. Did anybody have any questions for the sheriff on council? Any citizen questions? Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the monthly financial report. This is the May financial report. Melanie Cruzona?
Hello. We've got our May financial report. For the month of May, that puts us into our eighth month of the fiscal year, which means we should be at about 66.67% collection of revenues and expenditures. For the general fund, we are at 70.78%, and that is mostly due to collection of the ad lorm, the female brands, rental registration are all higher than budgeted for the year. Expenditures are at 65.31%, and the transfer out is at 57.95, resulting in a total expenditure of 63.39. The Marina Fund is at revenues of 74.67%. Expenditures are at 11.54, and again, as usual, that's because we're not spending, because we're saving until we have a project for the marina. Capital projects are received at 118.72%, and that is also due to reimbursement for and special assessments that we're collecting for underground utilities, Gulf Boulevard beautification, and interest income. Expenditures are at 212.9%, and that is also mainly due to Gulf Boulevard beautification and undergrounding of utilities in the stormwater project. Our total assets, cash assets in the general fund are at 3.3 million, and we earned just over 5,000 in interest in May. And the Marina Fund has 238,000. Capital Projects has 2.6 million. Total cash and investments are at 6.275 million with interest of 9,912. This is down a couple million dollars, and that's because of payments that we've started making for the undergrounding, so that's the difference there. And so as you can see, we've got 60% in restricted, 14% are in non-core CDs, and 25.82% are in the cash funds. The capital projects, we've got the Gulf Boulevard beautification has $203,000 left, and I believe Lynn, you just had some come through for that. What was that, 150, 42,000? So we should be almost finished, I think by the end of the year, we'll be completely finished with that project. The underground utilities has 278,000 left, but that includes POs that are still open, 827,000 in POs that are open, and that project's still moving on recently. And that's about it for the summarized report for May. Do we have questions?
Melanie, I just have one question, or maybe it's an observation. I think on the Gulf Boulevard beautification, seem to remember that having to be spent by September, is that what the rule is on that?
That is.
So we're in the process of having all that spent, right?
Yes, yes.
Because I think it's a use it or lose it deal?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Melanie?
Not really a question, but again, I want to say thank you so much for your service to the city, and we'll greatly miss you. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Melanie, I want to echo that. I said at the work session before, and I've complimented you several times, your work was excellent, and it was really a pleasure working with you the short time that I was up here. But I think most of the council feel the same, and I appreciate you doing it, and I wish you all the best in your career.
Thank you. Did you all want me up here for... Unless there's added...
Thank you, Melanie. Okay, next item is going to be the one that we've just added, 3.5 is the discussion of the June 26 budget workshop that was requested by Vice Mayor Gunn, so I'll turn it over to you. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. We're well into the fiscal year 1920 budget process. Back in the March, April, May timeframe, the new mayor suggested a budget committee to review the proposed fiscal year 19 and 20 budget. Due to the compressed time scale, the decision was to forego a separate budget committee at that time and instead to divide up the proposed budget for easier analysis by the council. It's time to revisit the concept of a dedicated committee with an eye towards the long term out years beyond the fiscal year 2020 budget. We've made inroads in the budget. We now have a strategic plan and evaluation tools for prioritizing capital projects. Missing pieces of the puzzle remains a critical look at the high value expenditures and revenue sources, and we haven't quite connected the dots of those items yet. I'm not sure that we clearly understand the impacts of decisions being made with the current budget on the future out years. Example B, the capital projects are essentially the expansion joint in the budget process. The current revenues do not cover the current expenditures and necessary capital projects. Annually, we supplement the revenue shortfall created by the capital projects by drawing from our undesignated funds, which is essentially our savings account or piggy bank. Based on a cursor projection of revenues and expenditures in capital projects, that fund will be relatively depleted in 2024. So here are the numbers behind that projection. You'll also note on that page, there are some assumptions, such as revenues and expenditures based only on fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 data. There is no rolling data behind that. We make the assumption that revenues increase 2% for fiscal year 2021 based on a forecast of a 2% increase in property values, and that's based on a discussion between the city manager and property praiser. Fiscal year 21, 22 onward, property values forecast to stagnate at 0% increase, but for planning purposes, we utilize a minus 1% decrease for conservative planning purposes. And number four, the annual operating expenditures increased by approximately 20,000 per year, which is essentially a 3% increase in pay and benefits. That's the only one we could really nail down with a definite increase. So far as mitigating strategies we need to look at, we need to look at reducing expenditures and increasing revenues. We need to take a closer look at grants and be more aggressive and proactive in seeking grants. We created a localized assessment tool, the undergrounding of Bellevue State Island, and we need to start thinking about how we can implement that process in other areas of the community. We need to talk about implementing the usage fees. We've talked about stormwater. If you look at the data in the Florida Vegas Cities website, that is typically the number one issue affecting all communities and municipalities. And you can see at the bottom of this list, we look at adjusting taxes and perhaps clothing reform. So those are the numbers. So essentially, in fiscal year 2024, we're essentially competing here at piggy bank for capital projects as we see them right now. We don't tamper with insight into capital and infrastructure requirements beyond them, nor have we put any critical thought into forecasting revenues and expenditures. We certainly have not had any thoughtful discussion of mitigation strategies other than tax adjustments, such as reducing expenditures. Yes, we've nibbled around the periphery of these expenditures, and in some cases declared directly angle on home. We need to talk about usage fees, localized assessments, and even others. I pared out some of the top expenditures. And these are just the top four line item expenditures. Pay and benefits, $657,000, which is 28.8% of our projected revenues. Law enforcement, $491,000, at 22%. Sanitation, $287,000, at roughly 13%. The debt service on this building, $209,000, which is 9% of our projected revenues. All in total, just those four line items add up to $1.6 million, which is basically 72% of our projected revenues, and then doesn't even add any capital. So now let's just take a cursory examination of those things. Law enforcement, not likely to see much adjustment in that budget, right? Sanitation, marginal, right? Debt service, non-negotiable. So the big low-hanging fruit on this tree right now is pay and benefits. And again, we have the capital improvements, which is, again, the expansion here right there. So that's why I believe we really need to be looking at 2024, because we had some ideas of some of the current things, but I'm not sure we have a good grasp on the continually preventative basis, what they're due and what they cost. The council and city manager are juggling numerous issues. This budget deserves and requires a dedicated systematic evaluation process, and I'm not sure this body has the time to focus, put that much emphasis and that much focus on this item. So that's why I'm throwing it back out there, that I think we need to perhaps school up a dedicated budget finance committee or advisory committee to go through this with a fine tooth comb, and also do the trend analysis, the forecasting, and the deep thought that goes into how we're going to address some of these shortcomings. Like our strategic plan, our budget process needs to tie all of this stuff together. It's time to charter a dedicated budget finance committee. The specifics should be addressed in the next meeting.
I just want to personally thank you. This is something that I had spotted a bit while back, suggested, and council did say, let's defer on it. Having gone through this, and I want to tell you that we only get two or three people who come to the budget workshops, but I personally feel that we've had some excellent budget workshops. We're really getting into the detail. We're really working very hard to see where savings might be able to occur. But what was uncovered at the last one was just what the vice mayor's speaking about. We can kick this can down the road if we want. It's been kicked down the road for a while now, and we will run out of money for these capital projects. And I had estimated about three years. I think he's come to about three and a half years. But three years, three and a half years, it doesn't matter. We're going to run out of money for capital projects. And then there's a choice. You can stop doing them, which apparently is what happened in the past, and that's certainly not a smart move, given the condition of the infrastructure. Or we can raise taxes, and I'm not talking about a $40 a year tax increase, I'm talking about a huge tax increase. And I ran against raising taxes, and I'm still against raising taxes, and I'm not going to raise taxes unless it's the absolute last resort. There were viable situations and suggestions thrown out. There was a suggestion thrown out at our last budget meeting that, I guess some people thought was funny. I didn't think it was funny at all. It was a very serious suggestion about how to eliminate that debt service, and it includes what we do with this building and whether this is an ongoing viable thing to keep. We need to take a hard look at every single thing in this city, the marina, this building, every revenue source. We're probably way under in terms of what we can be doing with grants, or not pursuing them as strong as some other cities are. And this is where we have to ultimately go. And I think, I agree with your whole argument, Vice Mayor, the budget committee is one way, because I think the people on this board and the council here are working very, very hard right now, but this is almost a full-time job to go through this. There are four or five major areas I can tell you. Law enforcement, I tried to see if there would be any competition to the sheriff. Clearwater was not interested in doing it, so we pretty much have the sheriff. He's going to raise us about 3.5% next year. Sanitation's a five-year contract. We can't do much about that at this point. So the two things that are here are pay and benefits, which we're nibbling at, as he said, and then debt service, so we need to take a hard look at this. I think the finance committee is the way to go. Thank you. Council comments?
I'd like to thank Lynn for all the hard work. I mean, I don't think anyone's taken the time to look out, you know, in the future, to see where our reserves will be used up. Kind of fall back to, well, I have a green finance figure to out, maybe on the left who did that. Thank you, Lynn.
Council, Vice Mayor's asked that we include this in our next budget session, which is actually next Monday. Can we get an approval for that? Do we have to do this with a second, or is this, this is formal?
Well, I'll make a formal motion, and if we include a line item in the agenda for our budget session to discuss chartering a budget finance committee to take the global vote for our budget.
Do we have a second? Second.
My only question is, would we have the ultimate say after the budget comes up with their idea, as we can then meet and dissect and make sure that that's what we agree on? Council?
I believe the, yeah, it's just a reliance on the recommendation.
Yeah, my only concern is, and I appreciate all the hard work you put in, and I agree, but my concern is, is that maybe past bad choices we've made, I don't want our city employees to be the ones who have to pay to make up the... That's what I'm concerned about. So that's why I just want to make sure that no matter what they recommend, we can look at it, dissect it, and make sure our employees aren't the ones who suffer.
These are at local advisory committees, so we have council...
I just wanted to clarify.
That's my understanding. Any other council comments? Any sense of comments? Two of them. All in favor? Do we have to go item, person by person, Patty, or do we do it all together? All together? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Area's completely seven to zero. So that'll be included as a line item on our next budget session, which is the eighth. And everyone in the audience, please, this is where the hard work and heavy lifting is being done. I think we had four people here last time, so we were all here, so please feel free to come here and give us your input, because this is, you know, this is where we need it. Okay, next we have the consent agenda. Item four is approval of city council meetings, minutes from the May 20, 2009 special session, the work session of May 20, June 30, city council meeting minutes, June 5, city council budget workshop minutes, and the June 5 special city council meeting minutes. So we've got five minutes that are being approved. Do we have any adjustments to that before we vote on? I have some changes and some additions, so if you don't mind indulging me. Patty, you and I discussed this. On June 3, Monday, June 3, city council meeting. Item three, presentation from the Penoush County Sheriff's Office. I asked Captain Liner, this was based on some erroneous information that was posted on the internet, about the police being told to stand down and not enforce the law in this city. I asked him if he ever received an order from a city council, the mayor, the vice mayor, or the city manager telling him to stand down, not enforce the law in this city, and instead enforce traffic. He told us no. I knew that was the answer, because we never, no one ever told him that. And I said, if we told you to not enforce the law, would you beset us? And he said no. So please add that. Monday, June 3, the city council meeting. Item 13, city manager comments. Lynn Reeves had told us that he had made a presentation. In fact, he had across the street in Bellar Shore. And I just asked if, and he agreed, that in the future, if he's making a presentation at another city council, it'd be nice if he would let the people on board know. I would have liked to have been at that, to lend him support in any way, shape, or form that we could have. So if he could just let us know that, and he agreed. Also, on Monday, June 3, item 16, my comments. And it talked about how I spoke about the employees killed at the Virginia Beach Municipal Center. Not only did I acknowledge that horrible tragedy, but we had a discussion just a week before about the need for security, and I thought that that underscored the comments that I had made previously, because there was individuals that had come forward in the city that didn't think it was quite as important as I did. And unfortunately, the folks in Virginia Beach said that something like that had never happened in their city, and that was the same quotes we were hearing a week earlier. So I wanted to highlight that to everyone. And finally, on June 5, at our work session, item one, the council members, we had, before that, there was a lively discussion at the council meeting with our city attorney, and the council had some issues with the way that I handled that. I had an issue, and it's not reflected in here, about how they handled that, and that was that essentially, a point of order can be called by anyone on this council. I do not have to be the only person to enforce the rules of the city, and in fact, I would expect that people would support me in calling a point of order when someone is out of line. And that individual, in my opinion, was out of line. Not only was he out of line, in my opinion, John Hanson, 22nd Street, was not reflected in here, came forward, this man is a former master chief in the Navy, knows the points of order, and knows proper rules of order quite well, and he unequivocally said that the city attorney did not yield when a point of order was called, and that was in fact the case. I appreciate his stepping forward and supporting me, and I would like that reflected in this set of minutes. Other than that, I have no other adjustments to this, and if there's any other adjustments, we will then vote on the adjusted minutes. Council? There being no other adjusted minutes? Are any adjustments to the minutes? We have motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anamis seven to zero. Consent agenda is approved. Now to the regular agenda. And this is a consideration, it's a long one here, consideration of Resolution 2019-03. It's a resolution of the City Council, Bel Air Beach, approving the fiscal year 2019 non-advorm assessment role for Bellevue Estates Island Assessment Area, directing certification of the assessment role to the Pinellas County Tax Collector, and establishing an effective date. This, ladies and gentlemen, is about the undergrounding project and how the city council, which had put the money out for this, is able to tax the individuals involved. I imagine this is yours, Mr. Reeves, or is this finance? Is this your item?
Yes, Mayor. This is going to be an annual resolution. We've already certified, not certified it totally, but we've submitted the first requirement on, it was the last week of June, we submitted it to the property appraiser for the coming year. And there were no changes, other than a few that paid their balance.
So what he's talking about is if they have, the people in that area who are affected by this have the opportunity of funding this, I think, over 20 years, is it?
Yes.
20 years, or you can pay it all off at once. And I guess you can pay it off at any time you want, right?
No. Only pay it off in April.
Okay.
And because we have to make that payment every May.
Okay. So that's where we're adjusting for people who may have paid it off. So with that, do we...
I've got one question. This is also the vehicle by which, once the project is completed, if there's been savings or reductions in cost, it's factored into this, and that's what alters the tax assessment business?
Yes. This is a resolution that adopts the assessment role, which in essence will be adjusted at the proper time that the project is over and we tally out all the costs.
Do I have a motion to place this before the board? Right, counsel?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? We've kind of had a little discussion already, but does council have any discussion? Citizen discussion or questions? Vote? Individually?
Yes. Councilmember Ockey?
Aye.
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swoop?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ben?
Aye.
Mayor Mantzou?
Aye. The motion passes seven to zero, and this will be signed off tonight, I believe, or I mean, tonight, yes. So this will be moved forward by the city manager then. Item six is to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement for accounting services. As you just heard here, our finance officer, Melanie Cuzona, his last day is going to be this Friday. And of course, we're right in the middle of the budget process. It's a key time of the year, so this is what this one is all about. Do I have a motion to bring that before the council? So tied here, so more of me than motion. Second for Tony Shirley?
Yes.
Questions and comments from the council? Discussion?
I'd like to amend that motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and strike the execute agreement for accounting services. Unless it's, the execution, does that include bringing it forth to the council for approval, or is that, do you allow the execution under law?
Well, it would be, you know, because we don't have, we have a council meeting once a month, and this is something that's kind of expedient nature. So what I'm asking for is to negotiate and execute an agreement for accounting services. And it says in the background area, to provide accounting services in the interim, which I would say within a six-month period, we would have to take this out to bid. So it would be an amount, I'm just going to throw a number out, it shouldn't exceed $30,000 for the six-month period, is what I'm saying.
Is it something we can do a special session, a special session? Is that a possibility? Do you think a week is enough time for you to pull that together?
Well, not for going out to bid, because we will have to go out to bid. I've spoken to Jackie about this, and, you know, I can bring you something back once we get an agreement signed.
You would bring that back for the, we have the next meeting's the eighth, so we can do that on the eighth? Because I know Cuzona was waiting on the fifth, right?
Yeah. I'll try, but I'm not going to guarantee it. We may have to have another special meeting, just for that.
Do we feel comfortable, I'm asking this to the council, do we feel comfortable in giving him parameters, six months, not to exceed a certain amount of money so that, you know, since time is somewhat of the essence at the moment right now? I don't mind calling a special meeting. It's your choice.
That's what I would prefer. My preference would be a special meeting because I kind of like the parameters, because this is a pretty thing.
No, I understand that.
So I guess I'd like to see, you know, once again, what we made, or what we even kind of run this through the risk, make sure it has value for the city.
Vice Mayor, I'd just like to remind everyone that it's a holiday weekend. Nebraska's a lot, we're in a work deal between now and, what's it, the sixth or the eighth? And the main reason for trying to move this forward is we're in the budget season, and there's deadlines we've got to meet over the next three months. So, but that's up to you.
With this said, I mean, Mr. Reeves, you and I have spoken, you've already taken some substantial steps, I think, towards fulfilling this. I mean, you're not starting at zero today. We've already reached out to some individuals, spoke, I know, with your proposal from Miss Cuzona, who have become an independent contractor, and so we have some options here.
Right.
So would you, again, I mean, we're not, we want you to enjoy the holiday too, but do you feel comfortable coming to us on the eighth, or, you know, because after Friday, you have no one, essentially?
That's my point. Actually, after tomorrow, I have no one.
So when do you think you can have this done?
I'll try to have something Monday. If I don't, we may have to push it in till later, and we just have a short special meeting.
So you're saying Monday?
May. I'm not guaranteeing that, because it's got to, you know, Jackie's going to have to help me write a contract and make sure it's legal and binding. So, you know, there's more than just showing up Monday and saying, "Oh, well, this is what we got."
Do you foresee that you'll have the proposals by Monday?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's probably fair enough. I mean, we could then, at that point, give approval to execute contracts. You might, there may be a contract review process, but at least we can...
Or even before that point, we could sit down as a body and discuss the parameters. I mean, we've got a lot on our plate tonight, but I mean, I'm not ready to aggregate my responsibilities to the city because it's a holiday. I mean, we'll do the best we can to schedule around it, but I'm certainly willing to devote the time necessary to talk about, when you have a contract, what the maximum ceiling is. Even before you start this going into the contract.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I wasn't referring to us. I was referring to you with the... Right. Okay. We'll shoot for Monday. If it doesn't work out, we may have to do it later on.
Let me try and clean this up. So you have an amendment. Do you want to withdraw your amendment and maybe move it as to table this until we have this meeting on Monday?
Postpone this until Monday?
Withdraw the amendment. If we have a motion to withdraw the amendment and table this, do we have a second on vote?
So moved.
So now we're moving on the amended, or we have to vote on the amended, agree with the amendment, which is to table this. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it passes seven to zero, so this will be tabled until our next meeting, which is the eighth, and then we'll address it then. And just one point, and you and I have spoken about this, Mr. Mantzou. I want to know when we're going to be planning to bid this out. I mean, I have no problem. It was like a six-month thing. I think that's fine for emergency, but the key is to get everything bid in right, of course. I'm sorry. Yes. My bad. I should have asked if there was a citizen comment, so we're going to put it in here, and if we need to revote after this, we will.
Rudy Davis, Essex County, Bel Air Avenue. The city finance officer is a charter officer. I would like to ask the city attorney, I'll put you on the spot now, would you research whether or not council actually has the authority not to replace the finance officer, since the charter can only be changed by the residents through a referendum. Then advise council whether or not we can, they have that authority, not to replace the finance officer.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, legal counsel, do you want, I know this area, I believe, has been addressed by our city manager yourself, but I just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you wish, to address it now.
There's been some discussion. I'm going to review it with Paul, but the same as the city attorney, if you could, I believe you can have an outside contractor as a charter officer. I don't believe there is anything in the charter or ordinances that requires the person to be at full time in this company.
Would we be able to get an answer on that also for Monday? Does that allow us to know if we can make that decision?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't think that changes the vote here, but does anybody?
I have a question. The answer will be written in the book, correct?
Yes.
Does everybody stand by the vote that was just made to table this until Monday? Everybody in favor? Aye. All right, so it remains tabled. Thank you. Okay, so now we move on to item number seven. Authorize the city manager to execute assignment of the financial and auditing services agreement. This is also from our city manager brought up. We've had a merger with our accounting firm, that our auditing firm, that does our annual audit, which is coming up for September of this year. This is a contract that will end in September of 2020. So in terms of bidding out contracts, every contract gets bid out under our new procedure and our, under best practices, when it comes up. Now, we do have the right to bid this out upon 30 days' notice, but we weren't looking to bust contracts. So basically, we have a merger of the two firms, it's my understanding, and I think there's individuals here tonight that will explain to us that they're actually going to be going with this new firm, so I think there's a continuity. But with that, does the city managers think, we have to get a motion, a motion first to get it before the council for the discussion? So first, do we have a motion to bring this matter before council?
So moved.
Second. Okay, now, say other comments from the council and the city manager?
Yeah, Mayor, counsel, this is basically a transfer, it's a firms that are merging, and Janina Richard, Richard Christini was here tonight. They came and spoke to us, I believe it was like the 17th of June, and told us that they were merging effective today. And they are going to be working with the same firm. So I sent that information. They sent us a letter. I sent that information to the city attorney and the contract, which is all included in your book, and an addendum to the contract that authorized us to assign this current contract to the new firm.
Before we move, just one second, because I have to go through city council comments first, and then come right to you, so stay right where you are, please. Any other city council comments before we go to our auditor? Sir?
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council, and certainly Lynn, and city attorney as well, because a lot of work is done behind the scenes in terms of all of it. And we are merging with a much larger firm. The intent is to provide a lot of backbone assistance that we have, we have had. It also provides a lot of background from the standpoint of capabilities from the electronic kind of processing for separate concerns and many other issues which are totally departmentalized in this large firm. They have multiple offices in the state of Florida and in the state of Tennessee. The name of the firm is Salt Marsh from Cleveland and Gunn. Their office that we work out of is the Tampa office. Their home office is in Pensacola. We are not going to go into Pensacola. It's a lovely office, but our clients are in this tri-county area. And so we're working out of Tampa, as I said, and the support is already in place. We've gotten all of the things that we would expect for a new crew, and we're building in. We will be following more strict, or not so strict, but the rules and the requirements of the new larger firm, which as you might expect, are higher than what we have experienced in the past. They'll still be conforming with our finance officers, association, and our institute, and the old requirements that we have followed up until this point for all of our clients. As you know, we are quite a special at some freight. We don't do banks, we don't do insurance companies, we don't do construction companies. We do natural comforts, public pension plans in cities, and public fire districts, all of which, which maybe we're in this county as well. So I'm open to certainly any questions. The transition here is intended to be smooth for all of our clients, including the city of Bel Air Beach. The, in all cases, it is totally dependent. We've got 40, 40 clients, 42 clients that live with no one other than us, an attorney. As you might expect, each one, each attorney has made a decision whether the contract will be renewed, whether the form, what it will take. The contracts are all in existence already. In this case, the agenda was elected to be used as opposed to an assignment, but this was our approach to all of our clients, is we will do whatever our board desires based on the advice from the council.
Christine, you ready?
Yes, Mr. Sir.
I did have a question for you. Fellow CPA from New Jersey, I'm inactive right now, but I do know that in the accounting world, a lot of times when there's mergers, the way these things are structured is that the existing partners and sometimes the existing staff has a certain period where they work for the new firm, and that's kind of under contract, and then they do the transition, and then they kind of go off into the sunset. Is that what we have here, or do you expect that yourself and the other individuals that have been servicing us are going to be continuing?
We are, we've got, I have two part. I've got three years and then six years. Within that timeframe, it's like any employment position. If you or my employer become disenchanted, there could be, so I'm not going to promise anything to anyone, but right now, that's the agreement, and everybody's moving from Janine to Erin, and all the way to our type this part, but Dus, as I know, she's worth class. So there's no intent to leave any of our clients in the way.
When you say three and six years, is it three years contractual, six year renewal? Is that a wait structure?
Yes.
Counsel, any questions? Citizens? There being no questions from the citizens? Close the debate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So we move this for a vote at this point in time. This is to authorize the city manager to execute the assignment of the financial and auditing services agreement. A copy of that was provided to us as item seven. Legal counsel, that's been reviewed by you, and you're satisfied with it, right? Okay. Other than that, then, I'm clerk.
Councilmember Ockey?
Aye.
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swoop?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ben?
Aye.
Mayor Mantzou?
Aye. The motion passes seven to zero. City manager, please execute that. Thank you. The fun part of the night. Here we go. Okay? All right. This is the consideration of the appointment of the park and recreation board, alternate member to member. We have a situation, there's been some change on the park and recreation board, and we have an individual, let's see what we have actually. We have two individuals that are up for consideration. We have the resignation of Mr. Greg Moran, and we have Rick Shrock and Merck Sarafian. Both of them were appointed last time to alternate positions, and now one of them will be filling Mr. Moran's position. Are either of those individuals here tonight? Okay, so then the first thing that we'll need is a motion to get this before the council?
So moved.
Second. Okay, now we'll have council discussion, if any? Okay, now we'll have council discussion, if any. There's no one here to make that presentation, so.
The one park and recreation board meeting that I've attended lately, Mr. Schrock was there, he's, he's shown a, uh, history of being engaged with the city, he's served on several boards, and he was thoroughly engaged with the parks and recreation. He's got a lot of experience in some other areas, uh, church area with, uh, public fundraisers and stuff like that, so I'm certainly, uh, for those of you who are friends and, and donations, he's great.
I was also at that meeting, and so was Captain Member Bean, and, um, I'll speak for myself, I saw the same thing, Vice Mayor. Um, he had a very positive can-do attitude, there wasn't one topic that came up that he didn't say, let's get it done, let's get it done now, whatever I could do to help. This is a man that they were talking about, I understand, in a prior meeting, um, and there was a situation, I guess we had a, a little overlooked situation, that we had some garbage pails that were overflowing, he volunteered to go out on his own time and empty our garbage pails. I mean, this is above and beyond what any citizen has to ever do, um, so very, very impressive with what I've seen and what I've heard about. Any other council comments? Citizen comments? Oh, isn't that ballot time? Madam Clerk, we have a new ballot. Last time if you were here, you know, we had some issues with the ballot, but I know Patty Gentry's worked on a real good one this time for us. We're voting for one now, right? Yes, okay.
Captain Member Rocky, Mr. Sarafian. Captain Member Bean, Mr. Sarafian. Mayor Manzo, Mr. Schrock. Captain Member Gaddis, Mr. Schrock. Vice Mayor Gunn, Mr. Schrock. Captain Member Shirley, Mr. Schrock. Captain Member Swob, Mr. Schrock.
Aye for Mr. Schrock, two for Mr. Sarafian.
Okay, so, Mr. Schrock is going to be the, uh, the permanent member on the board. I congratulate him, and, um, I see we have the chairman of the board, of the, uh, parks and recreation board, you'll let him know. Thank you. Item nine is the consideration of reappointments or appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Um, the Board of Adjustment has two individuals, permanent members. Patty, correct me, I know we went back and forth a little bit on this one. We have two members that were permanent members that are up for reelection or renewal at this point in time, and they had expressed an interest in coming back, along with several of the alternate members that are now looking to step up into the permanent position. Did I say that right?
Yes, um, two, um, alternates and one, uh, member, or one person that has applied that is not yet a member.
Right. So we have, if I'm correct here, we have, uh, Dawn Fletcher, right?
Right.
And she's the existing, uh, individual right now. Um, we also have Kelly Henry, she's also the existing individual, so they're up for the reappointment. We have John Hayes, he's the newcomer who's, uh, looking to get on the board, and then I believe we have a couple of board members that were alternates that are looking to become permanent. One is Josh Hollis, I believe?
Correct.
And then is there another one?
Carol Conry.
Okay.
And I, Mayor, I sent out an email, and it, it went out very late after I spoke with one of the alternates, and I'm not sure if we got it, but I put it like in place, so it had the information we had requested on the others.
So let's do this, let's get first the motion before the board for the consideration reappointment to the Board of Adjustment. Do we have a motion? Show them. Second?
Second.
Second? Yeah, that's okay, now it's over for the discussion. Um, so, Ms. Gentry, we have the information here. I had made a request of you on Friday for the attendance figures for anyone who's seeking appointment or stepping up. I think it's very important, this board, um, for the individuals in the audience, uh, has sometimes difficulty in getting a quorum, and when they have difficulty getting a quorum, they have to go outside to the special master. So I think if you're going to serve, this is my opinion, if you're going to serve on this board, attendance is very, very important. Um, they don't have a lot of meetings, they only had four in 18 months, so, um, it's important that people be there. And we have their voting records, so I don't know if everyone has that, but, um, Madam Clerk, maybe if you can just give us the totals for everyone, so everyone can kind of have their notes in front of them, complete. And then, I don't know how many individuals we have, we have council comments, but if any of the individuals are here, maybe they want to address us first before the council comments and questions.
Okay.
Yes, please, if you want to go ahead with the attendance, yes.
Um, Ms. Fletcher, uh, of the 18 months, attended two of the four meetings. Ms. Henry, three of the four meetings. Ms. Conry, um, as an alternate, voted at three, of three meetings, and the other one, they didn't need her, so three of the four. And then they haven't had any hearings since Mr. Hollis was appointed, and of course, Ms. Conry hasn't been to one.
We have individuals here, I know Mr. Hollis is here. Okay, we have three pe, three individuals, so, and I assume you all want to address us? I'm seeing a yes, 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 Mr. Hollis, yes. So, counsel, we can have comments now, or we can, if you want to go slightly out of order, we can have them address us first and then comments to our questions directly to them, it's whatever your pleasure. Have them address us first?
Yes.
Okay, please, I don't know who wants to go first, but ladies first, here we go.
Evening, thank you for allowing us to, uh, I'm going to the Board of Adjustment in August of, sorry.
I'm sorry, I, your, your name?
Carol Conry.
Thank you, sure.
Yeah, being, you know, a female, I figured, I'd feel that one.
Well, we have Dawn Fletcher, and Miss Henry, so.
That is the alternate. Um, I was appointed to the Board of Adjustment in August of 2013 as a full member, uh, sorry, we have, uh, screen there, and, um, I don't know if it's here, but, um, we did have a lot of meetings, although I believe I was present for each of the meetings that we did have, and in, uh, 2018, there was an ad hoc committee that was formed, which was the code review committee, which I also believe is an extremely important committee. Uh, it was determined that you could not serve on both. Uh, so, I was told I could resign from the Board of Adjustment, serve on the ad hoc review committee, and then when that disbanded, I could reapply to the Board of Adjustment, which is exactly what I did do. Uh, as, uh, Ms. Gentry has quoted, I had attended any of the meetings I was needed for since that time. Uh, I do think that, again, the Board of Adjustments is a very, very important board, very great community here, to promote community, and I don't think that we need to have people going away from whatever needs to be. So, um, I would appreciate being considered for a permanent position.
Thank you. Do we have, but I think, we'll just, if you don't mind, if we have questions, it'd be a lot easier, or we ask them while you're standing there. Counsel, any questions?
I have a question. Um, this is at Board of Adjustments, and we're hearing, um, variance requests. So you just made a statement that our residents should not, they should adhere to the code and not vary from that, so if that's your opinion, would you be open-minded?
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry, I don't mean that in every single instance. If there is a, um, a specific hardship or something very unique to a, a variance, by all means, I think that should be considered. But in general, if people just want to do whatever they want to do, we can no longer have a permanent beach committee, so again, I think the Board of Adjustments is a very important, um, committee to have for all of the citizens. But yes, by all means, I have, I think I've done that, uh, in so many requests, where I have voted in favor, in the last one I voted against, where someone wanted a variance of a 25-foot setback, and to make it a 15-foot setback on a common property, that obviously would jeopardize safety, safety of others, so that to me just made kind of sense to not accept that.
Okay, I, I, I witnessed your engagement on the code, I mean, you did a great job, brought up some great perspectives, and, uh, the one thing I see, and what you just gave your perspective on this is, you don't live in a single dwelling home, right? You live in a condo?
Yes, correct.
So, do you have the perspective to be able to address those issues that people bring forward when they're talking about property issues or singles and that kind of thing?
Yes, I think I do, obviously, I've owned a, a single family home in the past, so I, I always have that perspective, that's, that's a property of a, of a single family house.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Conry, I just would like to have you elaborate, I, your resume and your application was placed on our pile of stuff that we got today, and this is my pile, okay? I didn't get to read all of this in the 20 minutes that I was here. I'm looking at this now, um, with outstanding background, and I just thought maybe you might want to just tell us a little bit about your background, because I'm looking here, and you've got FBI National Academy, and you were a lieutenant in the police force. Could you please, just so everyone knows your background, because everyone might not have seen this, if you could just give us, you know, 30 seconds of your 30 years here?
Well, actually, it was 42 years that I'm here. I was a, uh, 22 years with NYPD, I retired there as a lieutenant, I came down here and accepted a position with the Florida Attorney General's Office, been there, medicaid fraud control unit, uh, spent 20 years there, retired as a captain. So I obviously deal with laws, ordinances, attorneys, um, you know, over the 42 years, so, and yes, the FBI camera was a, a real experience.
And how many total years have you been on the Board of Adjustment now?
Uh, it was from 13 to 18 as a full member, and then, um, as, as a lieutenant from September of 18 to now.
Any other questions on council? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have two other gentlemen, Mr. Hollis?
Joshua Hollis, from 1147th Street. Um, I want to thank you previously for appointing me to the alternate position. Um, I haven't had any meetings since I've appointed. Um, my background, if you remember, is in computers, at USF, I'm currently grad student in cybersecurity, working on my masters. Uh, after next week, I'll be 50% complete with a four pointer GPA right now, hoping to make sure to add a record for my next one.
Good luck.
January of 2017 is when I met with a builder to build the house, the home that we're currently in, and, uh, the builder gave me a, a floor plan of a house that he did before, and he said, we can just raise this up. And I said, no, we're not going to do that. So I went home and got my wife's big sketch pad, and started with a blank canvas, and I drew out the dimensions of our property, put in the setback requirements, and I started with a white sheet and drew out our floor plan to make sure that we had what we desired, which a lot of people see in the home, we had a large front porch with the large, uh, staircase that comes down that requires a lot of room, so I had to make sure that we were within setback requirements. Um, I basically told the builder where to set the home, and then also the type of floor plan I designed ourselves, and, uh, I told you this last time, so it's kind of refreshing, but thank you for your consideration. Any other questions?
Counsel, questions? Mr. Hollis, I do have a question for you. Um, you know, attendance, we were highlighting over here, how do you see, uh, you know, again, you have, you have no background, because you haven't had a meeting yet, so, um, how do you, uh, plan with regard to attendance, to, do you think your attendance is going to wind up being in the future, or?
Well, I am a full-time resident, I'm not a senior, um, I make a priority to, to get any, any more meetings, unless there's an emergency, obviously, I'm definitely doing so to the position.
I just want to point out that he does come to all of the, uh, main meetings and also the work sessions too, and even the budget workshops, which is very impressive, impressive for a resident to do, so thank you for coming.
Ms. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, John Hayes, 3210 Gulf Boulevard, Villa Beach. I was here several meetings ago and didn't receive enough votes for the Board of Adjustment, but that's fine. I do not want to usurp anybody that you feel is qualified for the board, and I would, uh, just tell you that I'm available if you need to fill a position. I do not want to take somebody's place that's serving the city in your happy way. I will only reiterate what I might have said at the last meeting. I was a real estate developer for 40 years in the Midwest, multifamily housing, that was my life and my work and my career. I know about real estate, a lot about real estate, and I was a single-family homeowner for 50 years. So I'm retired, attendance shouldn't be a problem at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest and your willing to work with us, um, appreciate anyone coming forward on this, and, um, win or lose, keep coming forward, I mean, there's, there's a position, there's a lot of boards here, and, uh, so hopefully you'll be successful tonight. Counsel, questions?
I have one. Uh, this might be attracted more towards the city manager, but can you tell us what the charter states as far as, uh, a person is on reappointment versus bringing in someone new, when they, don't they have like 60 days to, to request the reappointment, and then unless there's an issue with either, or to, of either party, then they automatically get that? Is that correct with the charter, or did I read it incorrectly?
They, they have the opportunity to ask for reappointment, uh, if they've been on the board, and, uh, traditionally, if they've asked for reappointment, and I'm saying traditionally, they have been reappointed, but that's still up to the city council.
Legal counsel, does, do you concur with that?
I, I was just looking quickly to see if there was any, um... I don't, I'm not seeing anything that specifically addresses.
Do you want a five, do you want a five-minute recess to check it?
Maybe. I just need two minutes.
You got it.
Now really, is nothing in the provisions that addresses whether somebody has to request reappointment or anything concerning current members getting a reappointment, you have complete discretion as to reappointment, the city council?
I located it actually in the Parks and Rec information, is where I see that, got the reappointment.
Okay, we're doing Board of Adjustments.
Parks, Parks and Recreation, I'm, I'm.
I apply to all of them.
Board of Adjustment, section 6.03, I believe, right, legal counsel?
Yes.
That's what I'm looking at, and I, and I believe, Councilwoman Swob, um, that that is, it's a special rule for Parks and Recreation, they have that rule, this one does not, so.
Right, and I didn't see anything under 601, neither.
I didn't either. So we'll vote for the two candidates of choice, based on legal counsel and city managers. Do we have any citizen comments? Do we have any citizen comments? Support against nominations?
June Van Scoy, Seventh Street, Bella Beach. I would like to see the Board appoint Josh Hollis as a regular member. He has continuously shown that he wants to be involved in this city. Most certainly has enough background, dedication that I have noticed. And I hope you take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Any Council comments? We will go to the ballot. Have you had a chance to adjust it for the five members? Thank you. We're voting for two now, correct? All right.
Do you have a question? Because we're voting for a...
Two permanent.
Two permanent?
Do you have a next one of these by any chance? Oh, you do, thank you.
Councilmember Bean, Ms. Conry, and Ms. Fletcher. Mayor Manzo, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. Hollis. Councilmember Swob, Ms. Fletcher, and Ms. Henry. Councilmember Shirley, Ms. Conry, and Mr. Hollis. Councilmember Gaddis, Mr. Hayes, and Ms. Henry. Vice Mayor Gunn, Ms. Conry, and Mr. Hollis. And Councilmember Ockley, Ms. Conry, and Mr. Hollis.
Mr. Ms. Conry received four votes. Ms. Fletcher, two. Mr. Hayes, two. Ms. Henry, two. And Josh Hollis, four. So it would be Hollis and...
Hollis and Conry. Congratulations.
Now, just FYI, Mayor, there will be a...
Now, that's an alternate.
So, I mean, do you want to select that tonight?
We can do that tonight. I would just assume do it tonight, right?
Yeah, so you've got three people, Ms. Fletcher, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. or Ms. Henry.
Henry. Fletcher, Hayes, and Henry for the alternate. So let's do this officially. Well, we need two things. We need three things. We have to amend the agenda. We can do that at this stage of the game. Is that permissible? Someone's telling me no. So amend the agenda to add this appointment on this alternate so that we can fill this board. And then have a motion to vote on these three individuals. Motion second, and then the vote. So first, we have a motion to amend this agenda to consider the alternate spot that has just been vacated by Mr. Hollis. And we have second. Second. Council comments? All in favor? Aye. Uh, yeah, well, citizen comments? Council vote? All in favor? Aye? Aye. Opposed? Carry seven to zero. So we now have that as election on our agenda, amended agenda. Now we have a, we have a motion to consider Dawn Fletcher, John Hayes, and Kelly Henry to fill the alternate position that has just been vacated by Mr. Hollis.
So...
And then second? Second. Council comments? We're not going to, uh, citizen comments? Back to a council vote. So we're voting for, there's one of number two, three, or four, right? Yes, as an alternate. So there's... Number one is out. Number five is out on this ballot.
Councilmember Bean, Ms. Fletcher. Councilmember Ockley, Mr. Hayes. Mayor Manzo, Mr. Hayes. Councilmember Swob, Ms. Henry. Councilmember Shirley, Mr. Hayes. Councilmember Gaddis, Mr. Hayes. Vice Mayor Gunn, Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Hayes, five votes. Ms. Fletcher, one vote. And December, one vote.
Congratulations, Mr. Hayes. Perseverance pays off. All right. We have quarterly City Board reports. There's no Board of Adjustment or Planning and Zoning Board report. But we do have a Park and Recreation Board report from June Van Scoy. She's the chairman of that. We attended a meeting about two weeks ago. It was quite something to see what the Park and Recreation Board is up to. So I think we're going to hear from her tonight about that.
Good evening. The Park and Recreation Board of the City of Bella Beach has planned a very hard event agenda and a budget for the year. As you can see in front of you in the report I submitted, as follows. The Fall Festival is scheduled for February 21st. And in one adjustment that, I'm sorry, February 21st. One adjustment that we might have, and we had to send it out to my Board. We have an entertainment group coming. So I want to make sure I get this date correct with you all. An entertainment group coming that is willing to entertain the whole four hours. If we can do the 28th instead. So the date will be the 21st or the 28th. I'm waiting to hear back from my Board. Patty, did we hear? We only heard back from two people so far. So otherwise, the 21st, as it stands, would be, I have two and a half hours built up music. Other than that, so, other than four hours. Anyhow, October 26th, we have planned a Halloween trunk or treat with a costume parade from the kids. You know, just be, they will parade up and down the street in their costumes. And citizens can bring their cars and, you know, and candy to hand out to the children. The street will be blocked off. And we're talking about an hour and a half of programming for that. Holiday Party is set with Santa for December 7th here at the City Hall. Other events planned is a car show that a lot of gentlemen in the city showed a lot of interest in doing. So we want to make sure we get that on our schedule. But the most current upcoming event, of course, is the Fall Festival. Our budget for this event is $2,000. Our total budget expected for the year is $6,000. Let me break down to you what this event consists of. As you know, we are going to have the Fire Department, the Sheriff Department. The Sheriff Department is going to do a K-9 demonstration for us. They're going to bring their, what is that, assault vehicle, their tank, their tank for us. We're going to have the SERC team here. Emergency Management is going to set up a table. The Fire Department is going to do blood pressure checks. Sunstar is going to do an ambulance display. Those events, those things, those things that we factored in are free. We don't have to pay for, along with the music. The only expenditures we would have in this event is anything that the City Managers should come up with at the last minute. Of course, the hot dogs, the chips, the cookies, the soda, water. We're going to keep it very simple, very basic with this in the city's first event. We also want to do a dump tank. And then have some kind of bounce house or slide for the kids. Now, in that dump tank, we're hoping that we will get the Councilmembers to volunteer to be in that and maybe the mayor.
You can make an armored car to take some money away if I do.
One of our goals with this group is to be completely self-funded, not from the city. Okay, that is our goal. That is the goal that I've reached out to my members and said. But we have to have alignment. We have to have a budget. Okay, so it has to be on the city's records. I've worked with an organization that's willing to sponsor us. But I have to have the city's approval before I can make a letter to them to get the sponsorship. It's a corporate sponsor that we pay for this whole event. We have worked diligently on freaking down all the prices of these things. Looking at the safety aspects, from locking up the street, pulling online parking for overflow from the city to one side of the street. Having designated areas for said parking. The Fire Department is here, we don't have to hire them. If the Sheriff Department is here doing a display, we do not have to put money out for a sheriff to be here. So if we have an ambulance here, should there be an emergency and they're doing a display, we don't have to pay for that service. So these are all the aspects that I thought of and our Board thought of when we were giving these displays and these people to volunteer for our event. I met with the City Manager and I have met with Kyle Public Relations?
Community Service.
Community Service, I'm sorry. On the safety and how we would block off the streets and so forth so that the children aren't where they're parked. So that would be the first and most concern of the Board was to make sure that kids are parked. So anyhow, with that being said, again, we are trying to be completely self-funded. Okay, we are going to reach out to businesses in the community. We are going to be drafting a letter that all Board members will be presenting. They will not be allowed to propagate the city in any shape or form. And this letter is all that we have to hand to the people in order to get these donations. I've spoken to the City Manager and my Board has asked me to create a document with him. And then we would have the City Attorney to look at this document. Now, here's the other thing that our Board at any time has discussed. If we can enforce it, we're not going to act. So if we do not come up with enough money, then something will be part of it. Okay? So with that in mind, I hope that you will approve this event and all the other events that are on the agenda. And also pre our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, some questions, comments?
I have a couple. You stated you want to be self-funded. Who will control those funds?
The city. All checks are required to vote made out strictly to the city.
How many streets will be blocked?
The streets aren't going to be blocked. It'll be one side of the street that'll be utilized. We don't want to tie up the streets. And we were, the streets in question would be 9th Street and all the cul-de-sac streets leading up to City Hall. And it would only be street parking on one side of the street. The next event, there'll only be parking on the other side of the street. So it's not a hindrance to both sides of the street at one time. Or any one certain neighbor having to deal with that. So we would alternate that.
Well, the streets aren't going to be affected. Will the neighbors be notified ahead of time that there's going to be parking out there?
Absolutely. It's actually in the city code that we are responsible for notifying the residents of all the events and the aspects of it.
How long will it take to draw the legal letter on that? And this question is addressed to our Attorney. Don't you have to draw some kind of a donation or a contribution type of letter so that we make sure we meet all the legalities?
I'm in the process of putting together a sponsorship policy. And I'll have Jackie look at it after I get it drafted. And that will cover us, I think, as far as accepting donations. And, you know, I made it clear to the Park and Recreation Board that, you know, all the funds have to come to the city. We'll be the ones that have to purchase the stuff. And I think they understand that this is a volunteer thing. I mean, I have seven people now, including me. I don't have the staff to do all of this stuff. So there's going to be some, you know, the volunteers. And they assured me to get the volunteers. So that's where we're at right now.
What about insurance? Do we need to look at that to make sure that, you know, there's grounds?
Well, we have liability insurance. If there's alcohol, that's a different story. Because I noticed on this list possibly beer and wine. You have to get a license for that and you have to have the liability insurance.
And that would have, and that's why there's a little bit of a, I want to say, playing in the budget that we're asking for this event. Because I've reached out to the area distributor on trying to get them to donate some beer. If they donated, then that would factor in in the cost of us putting out for the licensing for that. That is actually one of the fundraising things that we are looking for to help keep this self-funded. That and the dump tank and the other thing is to keep the Board self-funded for the events. When you spoke about the liability for the city, one of the things that I addressed early on with the Board and the City Manager was creating a document also that releases the city. So if anybody brings equipment or sets of a table or anything like that and it comes here to the city on our property, then they have to sign a release holding us, holding harmless from the liability. And we're going to create that as well.
I'm at ground zero of this and I hear it every day. But I'm glad the citizens are hearing what I'm seeing and seeing this challenge that I made back in March come to life. We like to say that we're a premier city. I think we're working towards that goal at this point in time. This is the kind of thing that makes you a premier city. This is a cultural event. It's not a garrosh town. This is something that really puts your city on the map. And you and I know, we go to Mayor's Council meetings, we go to Big C meetings every single month. And the other mayors have events every single month without fail. Big cities and small cities. And this is the kind of thing that, you know, is something that we do for our residents. It brings the city and community together. This has been done successfully in the past. This was done in the past before. I believe they called it City Fest and it was very successful. It got incredibly successful. So it's something that I'm very proud of you and the committee of what you're doing here. You have my tremendous support for this. I think it's totally in the spirit of what I was looking for. It's way beyond what I ever intended. So I think this is wonderful. It's very well thought out. It's very well thought out. And I know you've covered pretty much most of the, you know, most of the different areas of concern that I think most people have on this. So excellent job.
Can I ask one question, just a clarification, really? What you're pitching here is the budget is basically seed money. And at the end of the day, it's cost to the city because you foresee...
I don't see, foresee a cost in the city anyway. And again, I was very upfront with my board right from the start that if we don't have the funds, we don't do it. That's because we don't have, as a city. I realize that. But I have to have a line item and I have to have a budget in there. You know, that's just part of doing it, so...
With that said, I mean, historically and even this year, there has been money set aside for city events. So it is something that the city has said that, you know, as part of the overall good of the city, it's an event. You know, the city can sponsor certain events. I'm certainly not advocating that we sponsor, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars for events. But, you know, if this is something that the city has to wind up putting the bill for a few hundred dollars, that's just part of what we do for the city sometimes. So it's not something, I mean, it's not perfectly revenue neutral. I don't know that, in my opinion, it wouldn't be fatal. This is something cities do. We went to the Indian Shores Memorial Day celebration. That was funded by the city. No one was asked to pay any for it. And there was chicken and beer and wine and soda and military honor guard. And it was an extremely beautiful event that they gave for their citizens, about 50, 60 people partook in that. So I thought it was very well done.
June, thank you for all your work in the committee. They've done a great job, starting with nothing because we've had no community involvement on a lot of these types of things. I attend a lot of Bellers events because they have great kids events over there. And they always have a small charge for whatever they're serving. You know, maybe a dollar or two, you know. But it's, so that offsets. It's amazing to buy local health and expenses to people. So, you know, I mean, when you're thinking of budgets, that's also an option. And maybe local vendors just have wine or a bottle of, you know, potentially see if they would be interested in serving just like they do the... But thank you so much. Good work.
June, you're looking for us to give you the blessing to go forward at this point tonight?
Yes, please. We can't create the document to go out and get the donations. We can't do any of that until I get the support. That's where we're at right now. We, just so you know, the sponsor is preliminary. I told them that until I got council approval, I couldn't obligate the city. You know, the things that we got in place, I can't obligate the city until we get the approval from here. So it's all tentative until this happens.
Parks and Recreation Board is an advisory committee, so this is their advice. And now it's up to us to either be it or not.
So I would like to make a motion to give the Parks and Recreation Board the approval to move forward with their sponsorship letter so that they are able to proceed with the scheduled events they're about to do. Second.
The full agenda also so they can move forward with this September 21st to 28th event?
Is that what we're trying to...
I think so. I think that's what you need, right?
Yeah, basically, everything I presented to you is what we're trying to do so we can get those things rolling. Because when, quite frankly, when, say, for instance, when I'm working on getting a sponsor for the Fall Festival, you'd be surprised, somebody say, "Well, I can't sponsor something that big." And then I said, "Well, I have this event going on. Would you be willing to be a park sponsor of this?" So it's so we can promote the other events at the same time.
So the motion would be amended to approve the events as planned and approve, giving you authorization to move forward with drafting a letter along with Lynn and city attorney for sponsorship.
And the liability form is... Please.
Release.
Release.
So then, what you've been speaking about tonight, this agenda? Okay. To move forward with this agenda. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Council discussion?
Can I breathe?
Absolutely.
I'm a little concerned you don't have any policy generally covering this area. I'm really trying to think through it. I have, I think most attorneys probably feel the same, Mr. Madsen. I don't have great... I don't think a lot happens by getting a very lease form. We're not very protective of anybody. There are pieces of paper. So I just really wanna make sure that I'd like some little clarity on what you are moving forward here in your motion for one item. It's not as clear to me what exactly you were proving at this point.
To move forward on this, on these three events, September, the Fall Festival, September 21st to 28th or whenever, October 26th, the Halloween Truck or Tree event, which is a parents' type of thing. And December 7th or approximately there, a holiday party for the children with Santa Claus. So that they can get moving on this, to create whatever necessary forms so that they can go out and get their sponsors, work with you, work with the city manager. But basically, so that we can tell them, stop talking about it, go forward and start doing it.
They can perform, but they still will bring all of this back to you for a final approval?
Is the approval. Let them go forward.
Well, you have to approve a sponsorship policy and that has not been completed yet. So I, you know, I understand what you're saying. Your tone is to go ahead and move forward. But at this point, that's really just a consensus of council. It's not a motion that's here. There is no, I can tell you right now, there is no, in this fiscal year's budget, there is no event budget in this fiscal year. But we'll figure that out.
Did you not say to me in one of the council meetings that one of the meetings that you're asking money?
Yeah, we'll work that out. In next year's budget, there's $2,000 in there. So are you telling me to increase that budget line item?
We have to discuss it at the next budget meeting.
Okay, so that is in the next budget.
Right.
So, okay, so...
This is to get them going. And regarding, and again, June, let's go ahead, please jump in here. I know this because I was there when we got this sponsor. This was for the Fourth of July picnic that we're not having. These folks are ready to come forward. But they've got a six-week lead time, so we can...
We'll get this worked.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can't, you know, if we wanna make this happen for September, we have to get our policy in line. But these folks are, they were good and hopefully they'll still be good. I think they still will.
Last week, they were still...
This is small change for them, so...
So we can say we're moving forward with reserving them and then we do the legal paperwork, get approved...
Yes.
Once it's done. Just wanted to clarify, wasn't it?
And legal counsel, I mean, I'm, you know, having run in multiple races, road races, having done multiple car shows. I know they're not sometimes worth the paper they're printed on, but everybody makes you fill them out. So let's at least have them. So if something happens, at least we could exhibit one saying you did release us. You know, an attorney's gonna challenge it, but at least we have something. It's better than nothing. It's standard form. I know those are standard. We have a motion. We have a second, I believe, right? Council discussion? Citizen discussion? There being no citizen discussion, we go to vote individually? Or do you wanna do it in summary on this one? We can go in summary, right? It's not a resolution?
No.
Summary?
I just need a clarification of what we're moving forward on. I mean, I understand the concept of basically saying we wanna move forward with this. There's still some things we need to give us a little bit of housework. We gotta get some paperwork and then we need to allocate some funds for this.
We can do that in our motion.
So at this point, we're just taking a vote that conceptually we wanna move forward on this. But depending on this...
Move forward and reserve the sponsors that are willing to give us donations and then we'll work out the legal paperwork later. Agree on it later, just... But there's that six-week window, so we need to stay at this date, reserve it, and then we'll...
Wait, wait. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's clarify this thing. So, I mean, the way I'm seeing it, you tell me, what are you looking for? I want you to sell us because this is what you're gonna get.
Okay, what I need for first and foremost is we definitely need the events okay by the council. That's first and foremost, or nothing else falls in line. Second of all, we need to have a budget set up, okay, for a line item for the events and then a budget approved as well. So for this particular event, okay? And one other thing I'm gonna mention to you, every time that we have an event coming up, I'm gonna give you a report. So we can even, I don't know if you wanna address it and say that, you know, each event, the cost should come in front of this board. I don't have a problem with that as well because I think everything should be about checks and balances. But this way, at least we can start getting these donations going forward. The other thing is creating this donation letter. Now, I'm the one that actually asked for this donation letter, okay? And the reason being is I don't want our volunteers going out trying to get donations and making obligations from the city that they're not allowed to make. I don't want them to stay in anything. You know, I addressed this early on, manager. Reeves knows that. I don't wanna have any problems, so these are things that I address right away. I did this with the school system. I think it's a great way to approach things. So I need that letter approved that they create. So I'm asking you, basically, the council, to approve the letter that the three of us create that keeps this city protected when we're getting donations as well. So that's what I'm...
You mean approve the creation of the letter, the process, and then we'll approve the actual physical letter?
Yeah. Now, if, the other thing I would like to ask, so we can keep moving forward, because I do have a time schedule here on this particular event. Should the letter be created, and I'm hoping it will be created within the next week. We thought it was gonna be created a week ago, but it's, he's been dealing with budgets, so... If you all have a special meaning for anything, would this board be okay with me bringing that letter in front of you at that special meeting to have for your approvals as well?
I think so.
I think as long as it goes to Patty first and she puts it all in the joint, I don't have an issue with that.
And I think, okay, so, one just mentioned to me, we can only do one thing on this. Here's what I say, just based on what you just told me. We can't give you approval on the budget tonight. We can tell you that we will put it in and work on it in the budget because that's coming up next week. So that'll be part of it. And you'll be there, I know, so make sure that this gets heard and that this gets into our budget. That's the budget part of it. We have to give you the okay on the events so that I can move forward. That's number one. In terms of the letter, donation letter, we can approve the process, saying, sit down, create that with the city manager, city attorney. We can approve the process. In terms of the letter, you have to bring it to us. And same thing with the release. We can approve the process, but we can't approve a letter that hasn't been created yet. So I think tonight, we can give you the okay, if everyone agrees, to go forward with your events, okay? That at least gets you going and now you know you're having a Fall Festival at least. Now you're gonna work out the details and you're gonna come back and bring that to us. But you're blessed to go do the process of creating the donation letters, the release letters and that type of thing. The budget part takes care of itself next week and you've explained it well. Explain it again next Monday if necessary and then hopefully that money will be allocated to you in the budget process. But budget process goes on all the way through to September right now, so, you know, until August. So we can't give you money tonight, although I believe Mr. Reeves said he does have some money. I mean, if it's seed money, it's, you know, you need to buy paper plates. We're gonna get your money to buy paper plates right now in advance if you needed it, I think. It's me talking.
I wish the city would buy it.
Clarify anything?
Just to clarify. The city will buy it.
I'm not buying it.
Unless you wanna buy it, Eric.
I'm not buying it. I'm going to the dump tank.
I would like some clarification. You stated you didn't want anybody going out and doing anything until you had that letter. But then you also stated you already have people committed. So has that process already been going on?
Well, here's, we say tentative, tentative, okay? It's not a sure thing until the council approves it. And that's the way we've addressed it. It's not a sure thing until the council approves it. And at the end of the day, this event could not happen if they load it down. And that's how we've been addressing it with the people that are considering sponsoring us. It is a big step for the city, okay? And this is a big process and we have a short time window to create documents, to get things in place. So we are gonna have to, we had to be a little more creative to get the first event under our wings. And, you know, I appreciate everybody's help. My board has been tremendous. I just, you know, I couldn't have done it without them, okay? And this council, the support of this council. The city manager's been right on board with helping us as well. So any of that.
Okay, so I think if we had it correct, council, let me know if I have it wrong. I would need a motion to approve their three. You want the car, you don't need the car show at this point, right?
Well, if we could go ahead and get the car show, we could put it on a calendar, maybe.
Four events, so the Fall Festival, Halloween Truck or Tree, the Christmas Festival for the children and a car show to be determined. So we're approving the four events. That's giving you to go ahead to start working on those events and actually putting them into play. Working on the creation of the donation letter and the releases with the city manager and city attorney as necessary.
Correct.
That's what we're all for, I think, tonight. The rest you get through the budget process when we go ahead.
And through all of this, I just wanna make sure that the council knows that I have no problem coming up here monthly and giving you an updated status.
I was gonna ask...
I think it's part of our responsibility to do that. And that way, if you have any questions or actually even have any advice for us and things we could do, we're totally open for it. We had some council members come to our board meeting and they gave some great input and it was well received. And thank you for that.
Thank you. Now, so we have a motion for the three items. But approve their four events, again, Fall Festival, Halloween Truck or Tree and Christmas Festival, our Christmas party and car show. Approve their creation of a donation letter, approve their creation of a release letter. And that's the three items that we walk away with tonight. We have a motion for that.
Second.
Council, questions or comments? I think we've killed this, but anybody else here?
I do have one question. Lynn, just not trying to put a bridge in or say anything, but have we confirmed that we do have enough liability insurance for that type of crowd?
Yeah, the only issue we would have would be if there was any beer and wine. Then we would have to purchase if we're liable.
Which is a couple hundred dollars.
Three, three something, I think we looked up.
And it is factoring in the cost.
Yeah, plus you have to have deputies. That's another requirement. Well, deputies having a display and deputies for liquor control, there's a requirement to have a deputy. Different animal as far as a city event. That, there is a cost for that.
You were leaning against the liquor anywhere. I mean, it's on the thing in case you get a donation, I think.
Yeah, in case we get it. We're not gonna, it's not factoring. We're not gonna purchase it. It would have been if we got a donation, is how that is stated. But as you can see, and it's been well thought out, we wouldn't go outside the guidelines of what we need for safety. Safety, actually, is the first thing I addressed with, before we even scheduled this. I addressed that with Kyle immediately before we even put this on the agenda at all this event or any other events. We went over, we actually walked outside and took a look at the grounds and discussed the safety aspects of all events before it was even put on or discussed in our board.
Anybody citizen comments on this? I believe we can go to a vote at this point and it's an overall vote, right? So all in favor of this motion, again, to state it since I have to restate it, for the, we're approving four events, Fall Festival, Halloween Truck or Tree, a Christmas Party for the Children and a Car Show to be determined. We're giving them the go-ahead to move forward with the events, giving them the go-ahead to create a donation letter for sponsors and giving them the go-ahead to create a release letter. All to be done with the assistance of the city manager on all of this and the city attorney as is necessary for any of the legalities. That's, we're giving the Parks and Recreation Board the go-ahead. So all in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. Go forward and have a great event. Thank you personally and thank you, your group. I watched it last time. You guys were absolutely amazing. I think you left every council member who was there just speechless. You really guys did a tremendous job.
I'd like to make two additions. So we also got about $3,000 or $4,000 worth of trophies already donated that we can use for these events. So we don't even have to pay for those when we talk about things coming out of the budget. So when we get, like with the car shows and stuff like that, when people pay to enter, okay, we've already have their trophies. When we do the parade contest, costume contest for the kids... When we do the parade contest, costume contest for the kids, we already have trophies to give them, so...
And these aren't little cheap trophies. These are, this was a dance studio that was moving, and Jim happened to get in touch with the owner. These are like $40, $50 trophies. And thanks to John Hensick, we went after a council meeting at 10 o'clock at night and picked them all up. But we have a truckload of trophies, and it's, they're impressive. All we got to do is change the nameplate on them. So, those are thousands of dollars worth of trophies, so that's...
And just, just one little thing, if you don't mind, is there is a thing on the park for, if anybody's interested.
And you will come back next month and give us an update on where you stand with this? Because I think, since everything's going to be changing, I would like to personally know if the rest of the council doesn't mind. I'd like to hear an update on what the progress is towards, particularly towards this Fall Festival.
Absolutely.
And you sign me up for the dump tank. I'm all in. My kids are all in.
Oh, great. Thank you.
And you know I'm in, but you need to figure out what you're going to do at all the time.
And we are looking for sponsorship, if anybody's interested and they want to set up a table for their business. Even, you know, we'll take some sponsorship that way as well.
Just one more time, I'm going to ask for clarification again. You said you hadn't been accepting any donations, but then you stated you did accept the trophies, correct?
The trophies were given to me personally, and then I donated them to the city. The receipt is ready, may now to me.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, board, on our behalf. I think you're going to do something that's going to make this city very proud. And by the way, folks, this is something that we're gearing towards our city. Not that we're going to ever turn away someone who's outside of the city, but we're not looking to become a tourist destination here. This is a thank you for everyone in our city. So, that's where it's really going to be focused on in terms of its advertising and focus. Thank you again. All right. We now move on to the discussion on the city council work sessions. This was requested by Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vice. Just some background on council work sessions. Regularly scheduled council work sessions have not always existed. They were essentially created in 2018 council trial, where they originally intended to serve multiple purposes, baseline the council members' knowledge on issues, foster discussion, look for improvements, and engage the council. They were brought to fruition to go ahead and serve as a forum to examine best practices for managing the city. On a quarterly basis, provide a focused review of such areas as community safety and LE, budget codes, committees and boards, as well as discuss general business in order to expedite our regular council sessions. In other words, we would discuss issues at these work sessions and be prepared for the next council session to eliminate. Now, we could have seen through a lot of this discussion at a work session and be ready to just do business done at the council session. My sense is that maybe we have a backslide completely, but we're not continuing to move forward and improve on the process. So, I'd just like to put some renewed emphasis on the council work sessions by validating the scheduled dates and times. It used to be scheduled for the third Monday. Is it still pretty much what we're looking for? Same time as these council sessions. And look further forward than just the next work session. Perhaps let's put out a call for agenda items and pencil in the next four to six months' worth of agenda items. That gives us a chance to think about issues and prepare and do any research or data search, if you want to. What I propose is, I'll take this on as an action item. We'll go with the city manager. He's my alter ego. And just like all the data, we called for this, looking down the road for the 2024 depletion of the funds. I mean, he's my alter ego, and he's the guy, and he rolls up the sleeves and digs out the numbers and helps build the assumptions and stuff. But I'm going to work with him, and if it's okay with the council, I'll build a straw man agenda for the work sessions and bring it up for the next work session or the council session, so we can move forward.
Thank you for your offer, number one, to do that. I will say one thing. We had been holding work sessions up until this last month. This last month, we started with the budget, and with, because of that, I discussed with the city manager about temporarily getting away from them. It's not something I really wanted to do. We were making some good headway, I thought, at those meetings. A lot of issues that, this is only our, for those who may not know, this is our only opportunity to discuss as council members some of the issues. Under the Florida law, we're not permitted to, I can't pick up the phone and talk to Glenn Gunn about what's going on in the city. That would be a violation of the Sunshine Act. So, we have to use these work sessions, which is correct. They never used to have. This is our opportunity to discuss with each other. It's a lot less formal than it is right now up here, and we have back and forth. And I think they were being utilized, but with the budget, we wound up temporarily delaying them because we had so much other stuff on the plate. I'm not so sure that they shouldn't be continued, because there is stuff that needs to be discussed. Gadd has brought up something last month, and I'm going to bring it up during my time here about this whole issue with the, with these people holding us cyber hostage and stuff. This is stuff that needs to be looked at, and it's not something we want to even lay out here in a formal council session. So, I agree with this, and you have my blessing if you want to take it on. Depends on what the rest of the council says, but thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Glenn, for bringing that back to light, because it was something. We got a lot of things accomplished, and, you know, if you could say thank you to protect the whole spirit of the project.
I agree. I actually was the only council member that showed up for the last work session, because I didn't get them, and it was canceled. And so, Patty saw me in the parking lot, so that was actually kind of a... But, so I was all eager to go, so I'm ready for the next one.
I did hear a beat on Monday.
That's a budget session.
And the 29th.
No one else showed, can you say? It was silent.
Does anyone in council have an objection to having Glenn go forward with this? And just, if we could just all get a chance, if there's any agenda items to put in on this, but we appreciate it.
I don't have a call.
That's great. That's wonderful. Anybody, let's do it the right way. Is there anybody, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Close? Yours seven to zero, Vice Mayor. Do you want to have one this month, or you want to just push towards August at this point?
No, I'll just very soon start in August.
I think that's good. Either what we have.
So, we do not have a work session this month?
No work session.
You have two of them this month.
Two budgets. You have two budget sessions.
Was anybody planning a vacation this month?
I was, yeah. Then I'm going to get one, but a little warm. Yeah. I'll figure something out. That's why we have Vice Mayor, too, in case I can't be here, so, you know, chair the meetings. Okay. Is that everything on the map? Okay. We'll keep it with you, because you had asked about 11.5, which was the added item, the discussion of the Beller Bluffs bicycle situation. So, turn that over to Vice Mayor.
Yeah. I guess Beller Bluffs has moved forward with the county to try to disprecipitate the traffic on the sidewalks of Beller Plaza. And they came to us because they said, hey, it's Beller Beaches. And we, we basically don't really go after it for this reason. And the city manager at the time didn't have any inputs from the council or residents on that. So, he just said, oh, you don't really have any pushback on it. And I had discussed it with a great lady, and he told me what had pursued or what had come about during that discussion with Beller Bluffs, and I just kind of...
Actually, it wasn't a discussion with Beller Bluffs. It was a discussion with Tom Orsberg at the county. He called me up and asked me if we had a problem with putting a sign on the bridge that said, "If you're on the sidewalk portion of the bridge, you have to walk your bike across." There was never any discussion with Beller Bluffs. I'm sure the county made the same phone call, email. And actually, we were set up at the, the mayor and I spoke to him about that, because he told me months ago it was going to be done, because it's really the county's decision.
Okay. So, I didn't take a strong position on it at that time. And recent events have kind of brought us to the forefront again, when the young lady was killed on the bridge in the public area rocks. In the bicycle lane, late at night, killed by a drunk driver. Okay? So... Just a quick discussion of risk management. Risk is a function of the severity of the consequence and the exposure. A thin painted line that depicts a bike lane does not protect you from the crash. Okay? That's the purpose of a barrier or a railing of some sort. Florida law says it is legal to ride a bicycle on the sidewalk unless it's prohibited by municipal ordinance or restriction. You are allowed to ride on the sidewalks unless it's restricted by a municipality. The only bicycle, the other bicycle law that I'm familiar with is it is illegal to ride a bicycle under the age of 16 without a bicycle number. That's the only other bicycle law that I'm familiar with. But I think we need to seriously think about and get some feedback from our citizens, because I think a lot of people, whether they're, if they're typically a regular bicyclist, the guys in the spandex and in rows of 15 or 20 riders, those guys are experienced riders, and they have the situational awareness of traffic flow around them and what's going on. The typical person who puts on his bicycle helmet and rides maybe once every week or once every two weeks doesn't have those sort of skills. And that's why I think they have a tendency to ride the sidewalks or ride behind some barrier, because they don't, they're not aware of the traffic moving around them. And they're, they don't have the full confidence level that people see them and are aware of them. So, I'm just throwing this out, and maybe we need to have a critical discussion on this question rather than just toss it over the transit and leave it to the county, because I think Beller Bluffs kind of led the charge on this. And I think the train started to leave the station, and maybe we need to give some pushback on the station.
Just to clarify, you are wanting us to allow bikes on sidewalks as opposed to...
Or consider alternatives. Maybe we need either barriers...
Is this only on the bridge, or are we talking about throughout the city?
No, I think we're just talking about the bridge.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
And/or, I mean, we need to discuss alternatives. Maybe ain't just one sidewalk going over for pedestrians, maybe the other side's a bicycle. You know, there are probably alternatives out there, and we need to discuss the cost. And the county's got to push back on certain things, because it's very involved the cost of them, or...
Yeah. Vice Mayor, just, just, part of this was predicated by a couple incidents that happened, and one of our residents got punched out because a bicyclist and they got into an argument going over the bridge. And really, all the county is doing is saying, you can ride your bicycle up to the bridge, and if you're going to walk across, and I walk across that bridge, and bicyclists, they don't care if you're walking or not. They'll run you down. And the other problem is going down there, the other side. When you go down the other side or this side, they pick up speed. So, all they're recommending is, you can still take your bicycle there, but you need to walk it across. And most people of that level of bicycling don't even make it to the top of the...
Can I just say, I'm one of those bikers that ride on sidewalk, because I don't trust traffic for many reasons, mainly because of the story you just told of the young girl that was killed. Because I, as I run in the morning, I see every person I run past, they're looking down at their phone, so I would not ride my bike on the street. And I don't, it's not an issue. I mean, I don't see where it's an issue. I don't mind sharing sidewalk with bikers, and I don't mind, you know, so I don't know why it's such an issue. You have hard-to-bad eggs, but you can have them whether they're walking or riding a bicycle.
I agree. And I mean, when I ride my bike on the sidewalk, I'll go on the street around the pedestrian and just let them down. It's just kind of like etiquette.
Right.
But no, I don't think it should be, nobody rides a bike on the sidewalk, because I'm not going to let my kids ride their bike on the street.
That's not what they're asking. It's only for the bridge. Not nowhere else.
The walking on the bridge.
Yeah. Because everybody, the majority of the people that are going across are...
And I will set a precedence in the city, if we say you can't ride your bike on the sidewalk on the bridge, but you can assume it should be off the bridge. I mean, it's kind of a double standard. So, I think we, to Glenn's point, I think we need to be careful and really think about that.
I mean, the people that are physically fit enough to ride the bicycle up over the bridge are going to use the bike lane on the road. But I still think that people like me would appreciate being able to walk my bike on the sidewalk.
I think what makes sense is, they have those barriers, concrete barriers, that they could put up on the bridge between the automobiles or trucks and the other barrier that's up there. Whether the bridge would be able to take the weight, that's another question. But that would be, I think, the most sensible thing, because this bicycle going down at full speed with an unfamiliar person doing it, and they lose control, they could go over the railing either side or run into somebody. I think it's just too risky. They should walk over the bridge if they're going to use the sidewalk for the bicycle.
Lynn, I know you and I have meetings. We'll talk about it actually soon, about, you know, we'll get to the general comments about the, with Tom Orsberg regarding traffic and everything. And this did come up. This is maybe something, he owes us a lot of information, so maybe this is something that we bring back to him, get some more information, and this becomes a topic of a, well, we don't have a new decision tonight, but I think, you know, this becomes a future discussion at one of these work sessions to decide where our position is, because I think all positions have merit. You know, if you're coming down the side of the bridge on the sidewalk and you're heading straight for someone on the sidewalk, that could be a dangerous situation. But I certainly, you know, I've driven the sidewalk myself on my bike, because I've seen the same thing that council maturely saw, which is a lot of people not paying attention. So, it's sometimes safer. The difference is, when you're on Gulf Boulevard, if you're one on the lung with a person, you've got a lot of room to go. When you're penned in on the bridge, you've got a railing on one side and a cement barrier on the other, so you're kind of, you know, trapped in there a lot tighter. So, that's why the bridge, I think, is a particular concern, so...
Yeah. Evidently, you know, the only incidents I know, there were two on our side. There must have been many more if Vice Mayor's saying that Beller Bluffs...
Well, I think it was true, but one incident where a lady pedestrian was running over my bicycle and injured, and it caused medical damage. And that's what prompted that.
Yeah. Because the county's the one that came to us. And I just, when he asked me, I said, I don't think anybody cares if they have to walk their bike across.
Perhaps next time we do a council contact, we can just throw that question in. If you have a position on this issue, you can give back to the residents, which obviously we don't have a lot of experience with.
I did see a resident hand up. Will you finish with council comments? I saw two. Mr. Hensick, you were first, then Mr. Sofer?
John Hensick, 10322nd Street. This thing the Vice Mayor's talking about was predicated by uncourteous bicyclists on the walkways, running into people. And it was reported in the Bee several weeks ago that the city of Beller Bluffs was going to impose a rule whereby if you wanted to ride your bicycle, you did it in the bike lane outside the barrier. If you, otherwise, you walked your bicycle. I think the Vice Mayor, or one of y'all, had a solution to the problem, which is good. Don't worry me a problem, worry me a solution. You want to ride your bike, dedicate one side of the bridge for riders, the other side for pedestrians. But then you got to worry about enforcement, but it also needs to be posted. I don't know, because I've looked for those signs since I saw that article in the Bee. And on Beller Bluff's side, I still don't see them. As far as the spandex cowboys, I'd like to shoot them all, only because they have no respect for the law. They are subject to the law, just like you and I are in our forewards. They don't use hand signals, they don't do diddly squat. They'll eat in your way. Thank you.
Stan Sofer, 117 Fifth Street. I appreciate the comments a lot of you have made. Beller Bluffs by themselves cannot possibly do anything. They can only bring you to the county or to county road. On a flat surface, there's no problem with bicycles and pedestrians. But in this situation, the woman encountered about $40,000 worth of medical expense when the bike came down and hit her about 30, 35 pounds an hour and took off and just left her there.
The concern that you have with these bicyclists coming down the road, they too will use cell phones and not pay attention. You've got women that are walking their children, you've got prams that are in danger. You have people that put their backs to these bicycles, they don't see them. These bikes are moving at high speed. There's no reason whatsoever that a bicyclist cannot use a pre-designated path on that roadway. They're protected, there are barriers. But on the sidewalk side, because of the elevation, because of the danger of coming down at high speed and moving. And I don't know if you realize it, a human being at a hundred to a hundred and fifty pounds plus the weight of the bicycle, moving at twenty-five to thirty miles an hour is a really dangerous situation. I've seen many of them. I drive that bridge eight, ten times a day. And you'll see them with their cell phones just going lickety-split. There's no reason that person cannot walk their bike across if they're afraid of the traffic. That's my position. And it was on Channel Ten, you can pick it up anytime you want, where they did a fairly decent analysis of it along with the Bee. But please, don't look at it as competition between bicyclists and pedestrians. This is the protection of the citizens and one of our citizens was harmed and you need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just like to address that and extrapolate it just a little bit. From a hundred and fifty pound person on a bicycle going twenty-five miles an hour texting versus a three thousand pound car going thirty-five miles an hour with somebody texting. So again, it's risk management and who comes out on the worst end. I agree. We need to look at alternatives here because you gotta throw all of this into balance and I'm gonna say one way is better than the other.
Um, are we going to leave it at, Lynn, I believe, um...
You and I are supposed to.
You and I have a follow-up with the county, so we will bring that information, we'll bring this information to the county, Tom Washburn, and we will see what he has to say and come back here. We're not gonna take action unilaterally on this case.
Well, actually, it's not really for us to take action, it's their bridge. They, they, that's a county facility and evidently somebody started it. You know, they, they just wondered, it's kind of like everything, they just ask, do you have a problem with it? They did some type of study, I know that.
Before we give a city opinion, I think that should come from the council collectively, so we'll come back. And probably have a work session, this is a work session topic, I think.
Yeah.
Did that cover anything? Thank you. All right. So now we're going to move on to citizen comments. This is something that we moved here and the reason why we've done it is because we never knew what to do when a citizen made a comment that needed follow-up either. Most of the times it's the city manager who asks the follow-up, but sometimes it's one of us. So we're gonna have the citizens make the comments, you're limited to three minutes. You come up here, you address the council as a whole, you don't address us individually. You're limited to stuff that the council has control over. So if you want to talk about why the St. Louis Cardinals aren't playing well, I can't control Vash on the court, they're my team too. But they, you know, we can't do that, so that's not a topic of, of discussion, okay? But anything that the council has control over is fair game. Do not expect us to get in a dialogue with you. You're not going to get a dialogue. We're gonna say thank you. And then right afterwards, we have city attorney general comments, city manager general comments, city clerk general comments, unfinished business, and then the city council comments. If you bring up a topic that someone wishes to address, they're gonna address it then. If not, that unfinished business, that's where this will go. You'll either get, if it's a city manager's item, it'll come to you directly in the future. They'll either reach out to you or it's something that will come up at our meeting. As a way of illustration, one of our citizens came up with an issue about parking. People were parking excessively on the grass. It took about two weeks, city manager got on that. There was a whole bunch of code letters that went out to individuals who were doing that. So we are listening to you and it will get taken care of and it will stay on unfinished business until it does. So that's the way we're gonna handle this. With that said, Sir. Uh, individual in green and then we'll go right in front there.
John Hayes, 3210 Gulf Boulevard. My understanding is my three minutes, I can yield those three minutes to Ms. Conroy who will have three minutes.
That's correct.
She may need my three minutes.
You'll have a total of six minutes if you do that. Is that what we're doing?
Yes, I'd like to do that.
Sure.
Thank you. Carol Conroy, 3210 Gulf Boulevard. And I am the president of the Beller Sands condo association. So as such, I'm speaking on behalf of twenty-four Beller Beach property owners. There's been numerous code violations occurring at the Beller Beach Club concerning pets. They are a pet-friendly establishment. I don't know if they're a hotel or a timeshare. Outside, it says that it is a boutique resort, whatever that means. We've complained for a number of years about pets on the beach and nothing has really happened. Two or three years ago, I met with the former city manager, Nancy Gonzalez, and she had some signs put up as they, people from the hotel will exit to go onto the beach. And the signs just say, no pets on the beach. Well, I mean, it's like every time they walk by, you think they give the international salute of, you know, the heck with you because I'm walking right past and bringing my dog on the beach. Numerous times, we've seen them actually urinate and defecate on the beach and majority of the time, they're not being picked up and it's, it's not fair to the residents. And they're also wolf leash off the mother on the beach. They vary in size from small to rather large dogs. Even though Beach Club claims they have twenty-five pound limit, obviously that's not being adhered to. So I'd like to maybe give some suggestions as to how we might be able to do something about this. On those signs that are there, they're on metal poles, that besides saying no pets on the beach, if we could add additional signage that might say Beller Beach Limit its Number, so-and-so, a hundred and eighteen dollar fine. That might deter some folks from, you know, going out on the beach. The, I think the Beach Club should really bear some responsibility here and they should be good stewards of our beach. They're obviously making money on their establishment, so it's only fair that, you know, we hold them responsible in a sense. And I don't know how we could do it, but if the city might be able to create a Beller, a City of Beller Beach form that the hotel is required to, if someone checks in with a pet, and even if they check in with a pet, they're obviously being told, well, there'll be a deposit for your pet and if, if there's any damage by the pet, you're gonna be, you know, monetarily billed for that. So I don't know why we couldn't create some type of a city form that the hotel would be required to present to a guest that's checking in with a pet to say to them, there is no pets permitted on the beach. So I'm not only verbally telling, I'm asking you to sign this form that you haven't told that and that you wouldn't bring that to bring your pets on the beach. I don't know how that would be done, but I do think that maybe there'd be some kind of a form that could be established for them. The possibility of hiring a part-time code enforcement officer. I know we always talk about revenue and there's always an issue with that. But what I feel like is that the decals, like we get, the parking decals, that charges ten dollars for a parking decal that's good for a full year and for the first one, maybe each additional household member, maybe charge them five dollars. It gives us revenue to go forward to be able to hire a part-time. Even if it's one day a week for a couple hours a day, a couple hours, maybe more in the evening times when it comes close to the sunset, when these people are all meandering out to the beach with their pets and paraphernalia. I just think that it would, again, you know, hopefully, the tertiary would be starting out, summonses or violations. I know that nobody wants to walk on the beach and step in dog ways. And most people are out there in their bad feet. And with a dog, even if it's on the beach, but especially off the beach, you have children running around that if they spook the dog, that could be bitten. It's, it's just not fair to the residents to have to clear up with somebody who's here for a week or a weekend and they don't really care. They hear with their pet, which is wonderful. I have a pet. That pet has never been on the beach. So I don't think it's fair to the Beller Beach residents that we have to clear up with dog feces and stepping in it. So I'd like that to be considered and possibly some kind of a form. And I'd rather we be proactive versus, you know, than being reactive. So if we can nip it in the bud before these people are walking out on the beach, I would think that's a better approach to take. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm gonna break, I'm gonna ask for permission to break what I just said we would do, which is addressed this afterwards, only because I think this is such a critical issue here. It's up to the council, if not, we can address it in our, in our pieces here afterwards. But is everybody okay with getting some comments on that? Is anybody chapped into it? Is that a full with council comments?
I just think we need to keep it very brief because this, this feedback to residents tends to run long and it takes, you know, as we've heard, the complaint, the concern, you know, it's something that we can't solve here. It's gonna be, Lynn will solve it over months to come and I just, you know, cautious about the amount of time we spend on it.
Patty, please put this as unfinished business until this gets done. I do have a question for you though, and while I have you here. Because I've had, I've seen this problem. We had one time on the beach, some lovely little person, this was on Sixth Street, decided to bring his lovely little pit bull and leave it, you know, running around. And it was running around and harassing everyone. We called the police on that one. I never like to call the police, but we did. They were there in record time. Have we had, and I'm not saying this is your function, but have you had any response? I'd like to know how the police have responded if they'd been called on any of this.
Yes, we have, we have called the sheriff's office. Being in law enforcement for forty-seven years, I don't particularly think that's a law enforcement issue, to be honest with you. That's why I, I believe more part enforcement and maybe a second part-time code enforcement officer is much more able to address this type of situation. They have, but of course, what we're told is, well, we must see the violation. And by the time the sheriff's deputy arrives, and I'm not saying they're delaying it, but by the time they arrive, the people are gone. So they're, they're not seeing it. So it's very, very frustrating that year after year, complaint after complaint, nothing happens. And it's not, not a bad comment on the sheriff's office, it's just, again, they have to see the actual incident occur. There has been one or two times, I think, where the sheriff's deputy has actually approached people that are still on the beach and they didn't write a summons, he just, like, he told them, you know, leave the beach.
Patty knows how to reach both of you, I'm sure, right?
Yes.
Okay. And we're gonna invite you back when we have a solution. This is not, as Councilman Shurley said, this is not something we're gonna be able to do tonight, but...
I just, I wanted to drop some suggestions as to maybe how we can think about the reasons.
Good suggestions.
Mayor? Yes. Just, just to clarify something, code enforcement cannot issue a citation for a pet, it has to be issued. So that, that is one thing. We can fix the signs, that's no big deal. I'll talk to the attorney about the legality of us giving something to the hotel. I, I don't know if we can legally force that issue, but we'll talk.
I'm thinking you and me are paying a visit to the Beller Beach Club at that, yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a way of maybe holding the property owners in general as well? I mean, they're gonna say, hey, it's not my dog, but I mean, they're providing the access to the beach.
Yeah, but the, the situation still is the sheriff's deputy is the one that's gotta issue the citation.
Sir?
Yes. My name is Leonard Spencer. My wife, Janice, and I live at 11124th Street, Dog Beach. We've resided there since September of nineteen ninety-one. We've been very good neighbors and up until recently. This year, the house next to us at 109 was sold and a gentleman moved in. And in April, he began, he decided he would do a circular drive. Well, in May, he left for Michigan and was not to return until November. It was my understanding that he is recently, or going to apply for a permit to do this circular drive. My question is, why is he, is he applying for a permit at this time? I mean, he probably should have had one in April when he started the project. I think many of you have received some pictures and know what it looks like. I don't think any of you would like to live next to it, knowing that nothing's gonna be done until November. I just feel that it's not a good idea for us to have to go through that type of, of living next door to that type of a, of a procedure. Also, with hurricane season here, I wonder if that is going to perhaps create a problem should we have an hurricane. I just want to present this to the council and for your information. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Other citizen comments? I think on the same issue, are you on the same issue?
Yeah.
Yes, please. Mr. Davis, I have you coming up.
My name's Deborah Meadsen and I live at 11024th Street. And I support Leonard with his frustration with this. This yard has been torn up since early May. It's nothing but knee-high weeds and mud. And when it rains, it's in the street. I've already called code enforcement. They're telling me there's nothing that they can do about it because there is no code that they, that to enforce. That's what I was told. My frustration is that I moved to this area to be able to live in an area where certain expectations were held for homeowners. And I have had nothing but nightmares with neighbors. I have one neighbor that had, that it took her almost a year to paint her house. Took her almost three years to put in her yard and was parking all over the place on gravel. And now we have this and yet I'm, I'm being told that I live in a premier city. And if that's the case, then why would I have to be here today to complain about yards with knee-high weeds, with projects that were started in May, with dirt all over the place, and the homeowner isn't allowed to leave the state and not come back till November to do anything about it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Al Collins, 10724th Street. This is still the same situation and I forwarded some information to everyone to give them time to review it, because I know our time is short and y'all's time is busy. So hopefully I'll have the opportunity to look at the property or review the pictures. But this has been going on for three months. I mean, it's not a one occurrence type of situation. And as was just mentioned, I don't understand because if we go to Beller Beach Code of Ordinance, it's Article II with nuisances. I mean, this is better to maintain property, a condition, a condition that substantially drops the value of the property in the vicinity, accumulation of weeds, debris. I think y'all have incomplete or never finished construction. So I, I, I don't understand why there isn't reason for, for code violations regarding this and why we would take so long to attend to this. I mean, we have a code inspector who provided a vehicle. They're supposed to be driving our streets and I, I can't understand, after two months, whenever I contacted, it's like nobody's ever been aware of it. I mean, these things should be reported and they should be documented. I mean, residents should not have to go to this extent and this long for something to be resolved. And now if a permit is issued, what, around another six weeks? I mean, six months? I mean, we could be into next year. You don't even have to start on it till November, December. So that's the concerns of a lot of people on 24th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis, are you on this, you're not on this topic, right? Okay. Before, please come up. Okay, before, please come up. Patty, would you please put that as an unfinished item until we resolve that?
Is that something that Lynn can address?
Yeah, he may, but I just wanna make sure he doesn't get off there until this thing gets taken care of.
Hi, my name is Marsha Davis, and I live at 612 Bell Isle Avenue. And I too immediately buy three minutes to read.
Good, thank you.
Good evening, council, my name is Rudy Davis, and I live at 612 Bell Isle Avenue. As a resident since nineteen ninety-one, and an active participant in our city government for over ten years, and as a former mayor of our city, I have a keen historical perspective into how our city council and mayor should work and present themselves as representatives of the residents of Bellar Beach. So I'm here tonight to offer my opinion of the recent activities of the mayor council. At the regular council meeting in June, I cautioned about how I largely knew an inexperienced mayor and council should not be replacing a highly qualified and career government attorney that has served the city honorably for over twenty years. However, after making what Attorney Moreno noted were less than accurate accusations that questioned his performance, the mayor refused to let him public the recrosse inaccuracies, and then shouted him down as he tried to pounce council about his intentions to retire. The mayor made the situation even worse when he forced Mr. Moreno to leave the dais and threatened to call the deputy sheriff if he did not. This was an unfortunate spectacle. The mayor's lack of professionalism and calm demeanor were...
I'm gonna stop you right now, Mr. Davis, as a point of order. And I set these ground rules out this morning. Actually, council, I'm gonna address this council. You just set the rules out, and it's in our charter, and it's in our ordinances, that you're not to attack an individual. And to hear that I have a lack of professionalism, Mr. Davis, coming from you, person who I...
I agree in your...
Excuse me, excuse me, it's a point of order, we don't talk. So council, that person now who's personally attacking me, so what will the council's pleasure be? Should we let him continue to attack me in violation of our ordinances? Or should I call a point of order and give him either a warning or stop this performance? I'll listen.
I am very concerned if you do not allow citizen comment. I will say that. It is about a matter of what has occurred at an actual city council meeting. It would cause me great concern if you do not allow...
It's a personal attack right now.
I think that we need to be cautious on the personal attacks. I have been attacked by you, Mr. Davis, in comments you've made, and I know I'm corrected you. We need to be cautious in what you say.
I only describe actions I witnessed.
You're describing an opinion, sir, and it's a personal attack. You're the same Rudy Davis whose dining room I sat in, who told me that Paul Moreno should go. Now, please, continue with what you're saying, and don't personally attack me again, or I'm going to stop it.
Here's where you didn't finish, say, but I said that he's a twenty-year veteran of this city. Council has the right to recall his contract. But a twenty-year veteran of this city should be respected enough that you don't demean him in the process of ceasing his contract. Let me, let me stop you, before I go on to the rest of this. That was really reprehensible, to take a man who's given twenty years of excellent service to this city, not even let him at any time address the reasons why he was being terminated. And then in meetings, work sessions, you have said by two people, essentially that he's too old, he needs to go, just put the city in legal jeopardy, potential legal jeopardy. Here's my resolution to all of that. I think the mayor should invite the city attorney to risk the floor and to award him a plaque thanking him for his twenty years of service and shake his hand, and let him retire in honor, rather than abuse him the way we are abusing him. That is lawful per of service. And I'll stop there with those comments.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're finished with this thing.
Before you finish, I would just say, I would agree that every citizen should be able to comment, but I don't agree, I, what you were saying about respecting the attorney, I agree, we should respect everyone, and so I would just caution everybody here, I'm being mama bear in the middle, just, let's all give each other respect.
Absolutely.
To you, to us, to everyone, and please continue.
Thank you. I'm gonna skip that whole situation of the city attorney and just wait to see what council does. Okay. If the mayor thinks he is the executive head of the city, he is not. And the mayor needs to read the charter, city charter, that he's sworn a poet, as it clearly states that he is merely the presiding officer of council with one vote and represents the city as the mayor primarily for ceremonial purposes. All authority comes from a consensus vote of council, and the mayor has no singular executive authority. If he is giving staff personnel directives, he is violating the city charter, and the city manager should report any such violations in his comments at city council meetings. City manager directives can only come from authority voted council. When council appoints the next charter review committee, I fully expect that here the mayor thinks that Bellar Beach should change its government back to a strong mayor form so he can lead the city. The residents of this city saw the era of that format in two thousand and four, and they clearly voted for a city manager form of government to protect themselves from the overbearing and illegal activities that led us to...
Your time is up, Mr. Davis.
By six minutes?
Yes, sir.
It's five minutes.
Good, well, it's, it's, I'm looking at eight thirty-seven, you started eight thirty, so you actually had an extra minute, so. Want to finish, finish. I'm gonna give you a minute to finish, so.
Overbanging illegal activities have led us to unnecessary lawsuits by your reasoning or changing the council, city manager form of government. The wise residents of Clearwater recently voted, voted down, voted down, and changed that form of government and the dangerous special interests that it represents. I would remind council that you are legally bound to honor your pledge to uphold their charter in a city manager form of government and to truly represent all of the residents in a respectable manner. And I would ask that you work diligently and independently for your city and not just rubber stamp other persons' demands. What a shame when a newspaper recently compared you and our city to the same unprofessional antics of the city of Bellar Beach. That is a new low for us. We are better than that, and it's up to each of you to work to bring us back to a respected city. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Mr. Manzen?
John Manzen, 103 Twenty-Second Street. I realize I have three minutes, so I'm gonna try to make this in three minutes, but the things that I wanted to speak about seem insignificant compared to what I've heard tonight. So, I would like to bring some history forward about Mr. Moreno and the current mayor, if I may. Mayor Manzen did not fire the city attorney. The city council voted to put the contract out for bid, which is their prerogative. I sat here in those meetings and listened to the mayor tell Mr. Moreno he was welcome to rebid. I sat through a twenty-minute infomercial from Mr. Moreno one night about everything he had done, that was all well and good. That wasn't the time or place for that. Also, the former mayor, I'm at a point of order about a resolution that was an agenda item that was only partially read and voted and approved on, and Mr. Moreno took me to the woodshed and said I didn't have the authority or the right to make a motion or point of order. And as I stated to him, I've been a parliamentary for ten years. I know Robert's rules. Robert's rules does not distinguish or discriminate as to whom may make a point of order or a point of information. And he argued otherwise. And I stood here and stood my ground, yet nobody on the council defended me. I even went back and re-studied everything, and approached Mr. Moreno the next meeting and said, I may have made a minor mistake, but I still stood my ground. He wouldn't accept my apology. So I'm telling you, this mayor did not fire Mr. Moreno. And I know that the reporter for the D is in the room, several weeks ago, the banner headline, Bellar Beach Fires City Attorney, wasn't fired. You need to go back and look at the video. As far as, so that's what I want to say about this fiasco with the attorney. I've been here, so have other residents, I know what I heard, I know what I saw. Mr. Moreno was not fired. Maybe there were things done inappropriately, I think they've regrouped, and everything's gonna maybe hopefully go forward better. Is my time up?
This is your picture.
No, those were more important than the other things I wanted to bring up. The one thing really quick I wanted to say to the council, I gotta compliment the city manager on two things. The palm tree trimming, but more importantly, last Tuesday, went across the street to get a newspaper, and at twenty-first engulfed a flag on the pole was tattered. And I sent him an email. Tuesday afternoon, I come home for jury duty, and a flag was replaced. Well done. And to the public work staff, which I also complimented to him, the two staffers did a bang-up job on Twenty-Second Street, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mansfield?
Jim Danceford, 102 Seventh Street. I just want to point out that it is unfortunate what occurred with the city of Green, okay? But if we want to be a premier city, we have to start healing. The city has to start healing, we have to start moving together. We started showing that we can work together for common goals, be united, okay? And to do things that benefit the city. We can't go back. That would be so wrong on so many levels, and undo all the hard work that this council has done. And I've seen you all unite to do what this city needs to have done, to work effectively for our goals, to be a premier city. And I want to say thank you personally. I've seen it, I appreciate it, and I, I think a lot of the other citizens do, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Close citizen comments, we now move to general comments by the city attorney.
I just want to put out a caution, because I know you're taking on a lot with the park board, and we have new board members tonight for the Board of Adjustments. And what you're doing, not a comment on, on the good or bad of it, it's just be very careful about the sunshine laws in this process, because they're difficult to operate on, I mean, it is especially for a small board in a small town. So, look to Mr. Reeves, who is quite conversant in sunshine law, to make sure that as a board, you only discuss what you're doing as board, not your board members. That's just, again, my small-town caution, when you're dealing with what you're trying to deal with here. So that you think about it on the front end and not the back end. Other than that, just let me, you know, I, I very much want things to move forward in a positive way in the city. You are getting people to come up here for public comment, and they're going to criticize you, and they're going to say things, and you're gonna have to give them their time to do it, because that is part of, of public service. And it, it is not always pleasant, but that, there is no limitation on that. They're going to come here because they're going to want to help, and sometimes they're gonna come here because they're gonna criticize what you've done.
Yeah, just because I'm naive and poor, I'm good with this and that, but no. So are they allowed to come up, I mean, are they allowed to attack? I mean, or, I mean, they can criticize me all they want, but can they call me names and say, oh, this, this, or that, or, I'm just curious to clarify for myself and the normal...
You know, you, look, there's a, a, I think they get to the point where they're disruptive, if they're calling out from the audience, I think there could get to be a point with language that it could go beyond the pale. But for the most part, you know, I don't, I've not been aware, I think there was somebody in the city of Tampa one time who went beyond the pale in what they said. But for the most part, give them their three minutes and, and move on.
Can you clarify something for me about the sunshine implications here? As a council member, I'm restricted, having discussions offline with other council members. If I'm on a board, I'm restricted to talking to other board members.
Correct.
So not a board of committee members. Are there any restrictions with a board of committee member talking to a council member, or the mayor, or the city manager?
No, there, there is...
If a council member is a member of that board of committee, it's...
Well, then, yes, when you're, it's, the restriction is for those who are going to add together to decision-making.
Right.
So if it's two people who are part of separate decision-making bodies, it's not generally a problem for them to talk. It is when it's two members of the same decision-making body on something that could potentially come forward.
So, what you're saying is, there is no restriction of board of committee member talking to the council?
No.
Is this my...
I, I can't, I can't think of a situation where there would be.
I just wanted to clarify.
We're not supposed to have the back and forths, but I'm gonna make an exception whenever it needs permission here. Section two dash sixty-four, manner of addressing city council. Item C, all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any particular member. I think that can, that's very clear. I do a pellet ball. You go by the plain English meaning. So when you say the mayor is doing something wrong, and is addressing something, or the mayor's being irresponsible, you're directing it directly to the individual?
No, he's criticizing you directly, but his comments are to the entire city council. And none of us enjoy being publicly criticized. But, again, this is about what all of you are doing and doing in your official capacity here sitting to that in public meeting. And, you know, again, now it's not a situation where truly any of you should be individually responding. I think y'all discussed that also in this room, but it is part of the public comment, it's part of the purpose of the public comment.
City manager, and you and I have a joint thing to say, so wherever you want to do that, we could do it during mine, during yours, at right now, whatever you want to do, but we had a little meeting with the county, so it's really good news, and maybe we can get onto some good news for a change here, so.
Well, I'll let, I'll let you be the bearer of the good news.
I'll do that, and I'll appropriate credit to you, so.
I'll give the bad news.
Okay. City manager, number fourteen.
Okay, mayor council, we received our CRS, we... Okay. Mayor Council, we received our CRS, recertification, last week, so it's done for this year, so we keep the 20% rental terms. So that's a good thing. I think I mentioned to most of you that the grant for Seventh Street, we were not selected in the top of the group. The trash fees, I just want to bring you up to date. I'll be bringing a resolution. The disposal fees have went up. The county raised them, and so there's going to be an additional cost for that. It may be, I'm guessing, a couple-dollar increase in the trash and haul. Third through Sixth Street, we got our swift mud exemption yesterday. Not yesterday, Friday. Yesterday was Sunday. It will go out to bid on July 5th. It's going to be advertised for the stormwater project there. I've given you, the code enforcement officer's given you a report. She's added something. The Ps are things that we found out in the city. The Cs are complaints. And there, on the second page, there's a lot of warning notices being given for parking off landscaped grass. So that's where that's at. I do want to talk to you a little bit about the issue with 24th Street.
Yes.
We have contacted the owner. The house sold. We contacted the owner. We've sent the owner letters. We were, we, the code enforcement officer had another discussion with the owner. It's been ongoing. Our code doesn't anywhere say that you can't dig up your front yard. And I can name two or three houses right now that dug up their front yard. Now, we told the individual he needed to, first, we told him he needed to just put the dirt back in the hole and let the grass grow. He didn't do that. He's told us, and his son, I guess, lives here, he's told us that they hired a contractor and they'll be coming in and asking for a permit. He had grass along the edge, so he didn't really have to meet NPDs with silt fence. Today I was down there and he's gonna have to meet the silt fence now because the grass at the edge is dying. So we were fully aware of this problem. We've made several contacts with the owner. And we're hoping that the son will get in here. He told us he was going to come in with a contractor. If he doesn't by the end of this week, we'll take him to a code hearing. That's our intent.
They mentioned that Nehai needs, is that true? Because I know that's a violation technically. No?
No, it's, well, what he did, and I don't know what he did, the guy's 90 years old. I guess he dug it up himself. He hauled up this dirt and left it. It really isn't even wide enough for a driveway. It looks more like a sidewalk, but he, you know, we're gonna pursue this if he doesn't bring his permit application in with the code here. So then, then he's on the boat. If there's any fines, love you, but it's a process.
The residents been told with this comment?
Yes.
They seem to know about the...
Well, we, we talked to Mr. Collins on several occasions and explained that to him. I don't know if Laura, Laura's talked to one or two others in the neighborhood. I know that, but I don't know specifically who it was other than Mr. Collins because I spoke to Mr. Collins also. So it's, it's a process. It's not snap your finger and the dirt goes back in the hole.
I would just say to keep on today.
Yeah. Yeah. If he doesn't, then we're gonna take him to a code hearing.
I do have a question. This issue is, I mean, a lot of our codes can't be specific.
Right.
I mean, there's gotta be some subjectivity to interpret it. I mean, what, several residents just complained about is being a nuisance. If I just kind of carry that into the next month, I mean, it's just a nuisance to you for taking the calls. There are two people complaining about. So how can we take the position that there's not some sort of elasticity and some ordinance that allows you to say, "Hey, this is a code violation." And, I mean, we, you know, it's, hey, is it a hand or is it a tree or what is it? I mean, we go back to some of these things and yet you drive by this house and I had a look at it and said, "Yeah, that looks ugly. That is not..."
No.
I would not let that person live next to me. And if he was living next to me, I could probably be a nuisance to the city manager as well. So, I mean, we just need to kind of carry hammer on some of these issues and reconsider our position.
Yeah, I'm fully aware of it and we've made multiple contacts. At first, we had to go back to the original property owner to get a contact phone number for the individual that bought the house from her. Mrs. Lee, on how you still own that house. And I guess, I don't know if it was a rental or not off the top of my head, but we have talked to the son and supposedly there's a contractor coming to, you know, permit. But if he doesn't, it doesn't occur by Friday, next week he'll get a letter saying there's a code hearing established.
And I would just say, make sure we just keep updating residents, obviously, the big problem and concern.
Next week, we'll discuss stormwater fees. I did survey. We'll discuss that in the budget work session. With people in Bellevue Estates Island, streetlight bases are sitting in the Marina. And if everything goes right, they're gonna, they're gonna be coming into town next week with the streetlights. So they're, they're gonna start the process. I've told Duke that, hey, they need to, you may have more light than you need for a little bit, but I think you'd rather have that than none at all. So I've talked to the Duke representative and hopefully we'll move that on. I also gave you the Captain Liners, it's in an email. And we, you know, through Captain Liner, we put the little speed trailer out there. And I will tell you, you know, they've been monitoring it. Actually, they gave a ticket to an individual over a stop sign, which some of you are probably aware of. But they had the video and he was clearly past the stop bar, unfortunately. So, you know, it's unfortunate that you get the ticket, but if you're out there driving, you need to stop at the stop sign and not go through the intersection again. And...
Well, the benefit of the audience, could you tell them what the results were?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The 85th percentile was 26 miles per hour on 22nd. This is between Bay Shore and Gulf Boulevard. And however, there were seven cars that exceeded 46. That's one of the reasons we put the speed trailer out there. And we'll keep it out there for a little bit longer. Captain Liners, you know, put that out to the deputies. But the amount of cars that go through there, I mean, we're talking thousand trips probably. Seven cars is a very small number. But we don't need them going 46. I heard that Mr. Hansy was running the Speedway down there, so I'm not sure. And then the last thing I've got is vegetation. You've seen on the beach, if you've been out to the beach, at the north end of town, there's some vegetation there that's been growing. We've, we've sent pictures of it to the DEP because we want to question whether we can remove that because it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And it's never been there before. So we're looking into that further. But if you hear from anyone that's worried about the vegetation, it's a very unique plant. Actually, it's almost like a tree. And I think that's it for me. Do you have any questions for me?
Any other questions? Unfinished business? I don't know if there's any.
I have a couple things I'd like to just check on. Where do we stand at on opening that left-hand lane up from the place to the light? Make it a pull-up in later.
We, we met with Addie and Mr. Tom Marshburn, what, two, two, three weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
And, and they're gonna, they were gonna look into that and they're gonna come back to us with something here. I'm guessing it'll be now after the Fourth of July, I'm guessing.
He indicated that it would take a little bit to get back to the city.
Yeah, so...
That was one of the items that were...
We spoke to him about that.
And then what about the sign on Ninth Street, moving that? You know, well, it's right there. It states Largo and an arrow. And so people turn all night thinking they're actually turning to go to Largo and...
I'll ask.
It's just, it's too close to Ninth Street. Maybe we could just move it closer.
Yeah, it is.
And one more question. How many apps have we received on the attorney? The deadline is tomorrow, correct? Do we have an update from the last budget session?
As close as business today, two. We still have tomorrow, of course. So it's, it's not unusual for people to bring them at 1:59. Or sometimes at 2:01, right? And, and those don't count. So they've got till 2 o'clock to turn in tomorrow.
On the eighth, are we going to discuss that and the engineering to see if we need a special council meeting to address all of this? We'll have the eight engineering applications also.
Kyle and I are gonna go through those and we're gonna give you a point system and a short list. Probably, it'll probably be at the August council meeting for the, for the engineer. And then we'll see what it is with the attorney tomorrow.
All right. Any other unfinished business questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Harrison Avenue, Duke Energy. Did you get the bid or any information back yet?
No, they, I think the last time it took three or four months after we paid. So I don't expect anything, you know, immediately or not.
So the requests we've made, we get you to check to them for the...
Right. And that's all, that's in the process. And now it's up to them to go back and look at. You know, I'll ask them for a timeline, but last time, if I recollect, it was two or three months before we got another back for 20s for the Bellevue Estates Island postal board. Yeah.
Okay. And then another question I know we briefly addressed in your office, but I didn't get an answer. And that was when we had talked about stormwater fees and, you know, do we have a proposal or any further information on that? I'd asked that Melanie pull that information together for us. And you said you had some and you'd share it with us.
Yeah, that, I mentioned that earlier. I'm gonna talk to you about that on Monday at the budget work session. Yeah, I've got several cities' numbers.
I think that's all.
We have unfinished business. Can we go into city council comments? We go alphabetically this time, so I'll knock in.
I don't have anything specific. Just, I would say I always commend Lynn for doing such a good job. And I'm so far very proud of this council. I think that we've done a very good job of working together. We've had our disagreements. We've had our discussions. We haven't all agreed, but I think we've all shown each other respect. And I'd like to just make sure that with our dealings with each other and everyone, we just continue to show respect. That's it.
Thank you. Abby?
On the next work session, I would like to add something to the agenda. I was talking about speed limits within the city. So if we could put that on the agenda for the work session. Lynn, I gotta bounce a question back to you, which I should have done on unfinished business, but the Bellevue Estates Island spectrum, what are they up to since we're gonna put the streetlights in? Some of those streetlights may get the spectrum lines.
No, the spectrum shouldn't, it shouldn't affect them.
He's...
A year or maybe the poles or... Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand that. But I think in talking to the lighting company, Clear World, I think we're okay with that. And just spectrum, actually, I spoke to him today. They're supposed to be getting a crew out here to get that done. It's not gonna take them very long. And right now, Duke's scheduled for the end of tomorrow to do the electrical.
Oh, they're fully scheduled for the end of the year?
Well, they're scheduled to start pulling the wire. I mean, conduit's done. Other than a couple places, everything's up to the house. So the next process is the wire. And I know I've got a couple places we're gonna replace in concrete because I've told the contractor I want to change stuff.
Any, any news on the walking paths?
That's, that's a later-in-the-year project. Yeah.
Ran through the park.
We haven't heard anything yet. But I think we've got a strong possibility for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. Really, the only thing that I'd like to discuss at a later date is further clarification on how the short-term rentals work. They seem to be a huge burden on the city. Seems that pets, the trash, the drivers, it's a little bit of everything. It always points back to short-term rentals. And I'm really having a hard time understanding how a business-free city has so many short-term rentals. So I'd like to discuss that and make sure that we are definitely covering, we're basically taking care of the city and not just giving out free rentals as far as to the person who owns the property. I'd like to know some more about that. That's it. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Joan Sharl?
Just a couple of, just recapping on a couple of comments and topics we talked about earlier. When I did a little research in the past, we had an issue with residents attacking council members, things like that. I found that other cities have kind of a code of ethics that they post for the residents. And they almost even go to the extent of signing if you want to have public comment and read this statement, you know, so that you will at least, it's fresh in their mind to keep clear that these are supposed to be blanket statements and not directed to any one person, that sort of thing. So I don't know. I think we should probably get serious about talking about that. I've mentioned it to previous, the previous mayor. She didn't seem very interested in it. So, you know, I think it's time to take this a little more serious, especially being on the receiving end of some of those comments in the past. And I'm not saying a critical comment. I'm saying an attack. So. And the other thing is, you know, I just want to reiterate that as a council, we decided to take a couple of our contracts that were out of date and put them out in the marketplace to get bids, which is what we did with the attorney and the engineer. And I find it amazing that word is on the streets that we fired our attorney. I don't know how we go from a simple process, other than our attorney feels that he's part of city council and he can speak from the dimes as though he's part of council. Our attorney, and we need to be cautious about this in the future, to the point where I don't think the attorney should sit on the dimes, but should only give us legal advice, period. Not, not speak up about actions that we're taking, things that we're doing. So I just want to go on record as saying that. It's very frustrating to me.
That's our law. That's not even a request. I read that into the record last time. It is unequivocally clear. He's to give, or he or she is to give legal advice only. And that wasn't legal advice, what he was doing.
And may I interrupt there too, Bob, for a minute? He was, he had time. Every meeting, he has mayor's comments. He could have went ahead rather than on the item number 10, which all we were doing is bringing his position out to bid. He could have made those comments without creating a nightmare. And he did. There was no reason. There was no reason. None whatsoever.
Thank you.
And another just caution of allowing people to continue their contract. When a contract is up, we revisit it. You never allow someone to sit the same contract for 20 years. They're too comfortable. They believe they have more authority than they have. And that's where we landed ourselves from previous council's decisions. So, okay?
Thank you. Ms. Lopez?
Yeah, first off, I'd like to thank Lynn as well as our entire staff for all the work you did on the hurricane. It was an amazing meeting and I appreciated it so much. We received such valuable information from the community as well as the people that attended. Hopefully, it will continue to grow in the future because I really appreciated all the efforts. Also, I would like to say that this is probably not going to be something a lot of you want to hear. Maybe not. But going along with Dr. Aki's statement about respect, I think the city should put on an agenda to discuss, having a lunch in behalf of the attorney that served us so many years as well as Melanie for their leading the community in the city.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Your comment about people stepping up for citizens' comments. In Dunedin, you want to speak is actually a form that you fill out. And if you want to give up minutes as a proxy to experience somebody else, because you've got to have meaning to stuff on that. I mean, that may be one of those best practices that kind of spell out, hey, you know, these are kind of the rules of engagement. If you want to come up and address us, you acknowledge that you've got so many minutes. You don't do this, you don't do this, you listen to this. Don't expect this or whatever. So that was it. But the workshop, throw kudos back to the city manager, Lynn Reeves, who's always crushing that data and figuring out where we want to be in the out years, past 2024. He's been really engaged on that and I appreciate his assistance. He's done a great job of that. I brought up information technology at the budget workshop. I said, you know, we're kind of reducing this a small percentage. And I asked some questions about training. So I walk into the meeting we, you and I had to punch out the numbers. And then it's like, okay, well, email me the results. It's like, oh, her email's not working. So, I mean, I keep seeing stuff like that. And what I'm going to say here is maybe we need a second set of eyes on the situation. And I can't think of anyone more qualified than our fellow Josh Holtz. He's a grad student in information technology. He's going through some of the side of security stuff. And his engagement with the city is very encouraging. He's trying to get in where he can to help us out and manage systems where he can. So we may want to touch base with Josh and say, hey, would you be interested in coming in and looking at some of these issues that we're having? Maybe give us some recommendations and suggestions. I'd like to, I'm not sure, has the window closed on applying or signing up for that IEMO training? Patty? Did the window close on applications for that IEMO training?
I have to check.
I know the mayor's going to it. Jody and I went to it. We were trying to get into the advanced one because we got so much benefit out of the first one. I mean, it explains, hey, why you can't tax, why you can use usage fees and talk about. And the biggest thing is the networking because there's a lot of new council members there, a lot of them are in the small cities and some of the newly incorporated ones. And it's a chance to, hey, what are you dealing with for this issue? Or how are you circumventing this problem? I mean, it's a good networking opportunity. So I'm just throwing it out there to encourage people to attend if they can. I know it's got busy complexes a lot. I got a lot out of it and I'm looking forward to the advanced training myself. IT, you know, I had a funny thought about these sessions are video recording. There's no audio recording. But boards and committees, we're still using perceptors. Why haven't we gone to digital recorder?
It's digital now.
We joined the 1990 one.
I was told I could get an email on the digital recorder. So hopefully we have something.
Bring this decade up. That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
All right. Glad you're still here, Wayne. Sit tight, we've got something for you that I want to talk to you about. But let's talk about what June and I did for the city, okay? We woke up at 5:00 in the morning a couple of weeks ago, drove all the way up to Orlando to meet with Senator Rick Scott regarding hurricane preparedness. We did that because we care about this city. It's the same reason why we're on the SERC team. We got one other citizen in the city, John Hansick, who's on that SERC team. Now, I heard from a lot of people when I was running about they want to help out the city in the event of a hurricane. And I've got to tell you, Lynn Reeves did a really good job last time. He's got three people to help him, okay? So if we get a big hurricane, he's good. But no one is good enough to fix a big hurricane. We need all the help we can get. There's three of us right now that go one Wednesday a month to learn first aid techniques, rescue techniques and everything else. And I realize I'll have responsibility with the city here, but to the extent that I can help anyone, it's not just necessarily for a hurricane. It's for any emergency. I'm available to do it. I've already saved a life. June's already saved a life, not from this, it's happened in our past. And, you know, if I could do that again, that's a gratifying feeling, so. And I invite anyone who wants to do that to participate. What we got out of the Rick Scott meeting was that there is an army of people that they have set. Thank God, as governor and now as senator, he puts a high priority on hurricane preparedness. We met with all FEMA people, all HUD people, everyone that really would be involved if we have a major problem here. He had them all there at this meeting and it was quite impressive. And we've got contact information. So just know that we are not alone if something really, really bad befalls this city. But it is up to us, of course, to do as much as we can. Also on that regard, I place a high value on public safety. And I've been appointed a few months back as one of the mayor's council representatives to the EMS board in Pinellas County. I had my first meeting. And again, it's amazing how much is being done in Pinellas County. All fire departments, Sunstar ambulance. But there's not a lot of people left at this point. But to the folks who are left and to all the council members, if you hear about any issues with Sunstar or with our fire department, please get in touch with me. I have a direct pipeline to county commissioners, to all the individuals that are responsible, that fund these folks, that make this thing go. And I can get your comments there. So if there's something that's not going well or if there's something that is going well, please let me know. Lynn Reeves and I met with Tom Washburn. We hinted a little bit about this. Finally, we got to meet him regarding our traffic situation. As many of you know, I was told what I could go do to myself by our friendly mayor of Clearwater. Well, I don't take that lying down. So we met with Mr. Washburn and we gave a variety of proposals. And we are working on hearing back from him. We did talk about what Councilwoman Spoh mentioned on the opening up that bridge to a second lane. I brought the idea of two lanes on the bridge, a turn lane, a number of things with traffic, traffic patterns, monitoring. He owes us quite a bit of information. We had a two-hour meeting with him. Everything is on the table, everything. So Clearwater may have some surprises. Because I brought up, I'm glad you're still here, Wayne, I brought up the idea of slap at a toll and Lynn put the idea of congestion pricing, if necessary, on that bridge, okay? So if we can get satisfaction from our county, then that's wonderful. But I promised, I didn't promise to solve the traffic problem and I promised to do everything I could to fix it. And I'm not going to take anyone telling me what I can go do to myself and I'm not going to take anyone telling me that it can't be done. So if we have to toll that bridge, apparently, it's a possibility. If we have to put congestion pricing in, apparently, it's a possibility. So nothing is going off the table until we figure out why our city gridlocks every time they have a party up the road in Clearwater. Great that one, Wayne. Okay, now, next thing. Let's do the city attorney thing and end on a positive note because it's the last time, folks, the last time I'm going to talk about this city attorney situation. As Councilwoman Shirley said, I started here along with the new council members in our first work session. We took a look at every contract, every single contract that this city had. And it's the last time I'm going to explain this. And we said, every contract as it comes up and gets put out for bid. There were two contracts that stood out as exceptions, longstanding exceptions. One was our engineering and it was, I believe, three individuals. And it was bid out without a peep. No dog and pony show, no charades, no nothing. And then we had the city attorney. 21 years in the same position. The Rudy Davises, the Leslie Nateros, all the people came and spoke to us telling us that we don't know what we're doing. Never once bothered to put that out to see what else was out there. Well, this council voted seven to zero and had the courage, courage, to just say, let's take a look at what else is out there. No one fired this guy. No one constructively terminated him. Not one person on this council ever made any remarks about this guy's age. And if Rudy Davis thinks you can sue council members for what they say in chambers, he doesn't know much about law. However, no one ever said anything about this guy's age. He was permitted to give what Mr. Hansick said was an infomercial the first time. All we were doing was putting the thing out for bid. And I allowed him to speak for, it seemed like an hour, but I think it was, I was told it was 15 or 20 minutes. He wasn't entitled to speak at all under our city rules, not one minute. And I granted him all that time. And I listened and no one stopped him. I eventually stopped him because it was going on forever and I still gave him a two-minute warning. That was only so we could bid the thing out. He had no say in it. He was actually talking about something that was going out to bid. I don't even know if that's something you could do. You're talking to this council. You're also, as an attorney, taking a position against your client. I know that's something you shouldn't be doing. And we went through with it. And then I came to, we came to a special session where we had, actually, there was a problem with that RFQ. Glenn Gunn had found a couple of issues. We needed a couple of extra days to firm that thing up. Then we had a session. And this council had asked a couple of questions. And I said I was going to rebut some of the stuff that was said. I had every right to do that. And everything I said was factually correct or checked with an individual. I can't help it if this guy doesn't want to accept what the reality was. I didn't make anything up. And quite frankly, I sat here and talked about unconstitutional law on the book. His own attorney, Jackie Soto, agreed with me that our sign ordinance is unconstitutional. There's a Supreme Court case in 2015. You didn't watch that tape, Wayne, when you published your little manifesto last week. You published that we ousted the attorney without bothering to fact-check. You're better than that. You really are. So their own attorney agrees that the law's unconstitutional. Has the parking ordinance? The proposal I got, folks, for the parking ordinance actually permits parking on our streets. I said, don't even bring this to us. I'm not going with this. I'm not even going to bring it up to council. I don't want to hear it. This all came about because I was prohibited as a candidate from campaigning, which I know is not constitutional. That's my opinion. If Jackie Soto has a different one, that's fine. You can find out in federal court who's right if some of them sue you down the road. I said, don't go there when it comes to political and religious. And that's what we said. No one talked about this guy's age. No one talked about anything other than bid this contract out. No one terminated him. So we didn't oust anyone, Wayne. We didn't oust anyone. All we did was put this contract out for bid to see what else was out there. And I invited him multiple times to the point that I said, I want you to make a presentation in front of our board. I actually said that you will go to the finals. This is like playing the football season and saying, you're going to be in the playoffs without ever having to play a game. I couldn't have bent over backward anymore. The night that was in question, he passed me four times, four times. If he wanted to resign, we could have put item number 10, which is what that was, on a table that item. All he would have had to say was, Mr. Mayor, I intend to resign. Can I say something to the cap, can I say something to the city and to the council? And I would have permitted him to do that. What he wanted to do was rebut everything that I said. That thing was already out for RFQ. There's not going to be any rebutting and there's not going to be another thing talked about it. He would have had his opportunity to give his qualifications when the time came. He was already invited into the finals. But then what's most amazing, after that entire situation, after he just tramples Robert's Rules of Order, doesn't bother listening to a point of order, talks over me, doesn't listen, finally, we have to summon the sheriff, which is an embarrassment to the city, okay? Then he submits his resignation the next day saying that two months ago, he made up his mind and he was going to resign.
Mayor, I'd like to add a point of order. We're plowing old ground here. You know, we all understand that that thing got derailed and there were some misperceptions. That's my first point I'd like to make. The second point I'd like to make is I would ask that you show the same respect citizens making comments elected at the council as us making comments about the citizens made in residence. I think it's been a long night of plowing old ground here. We made up.
I appreciate that. I don't know if there's a point of order of something that was done improperly, Mr. Gunn, so I'll wrap it up.
It was the only way I could do it.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. So essentially, this was put out to bid and we had every right to do that. We had two unanimous votes, one seven to zero and one six to zero. So anybody saying that I'm dictating anything to council is incorrect. And I don't appreciate the city attorney, the city attorney, our attorney, walking up and down the aisles alleging ethical violations, alleging sunshine violations. It was overheard by people and it got back to me. It's unprofessional and it's unacceptable. That's all I'm saying about the city attorney situation for now and in the future. If anyone has any questions, contact me privately. Let's end on a positive note here. Mr. Reeves and I, along with a major assist from June Van Scolling, June and I have been hitting every city commissioner that we can on an issue that bothered me since before I ever ran for office and that was sewage floating down Seventh Street. We have a lift station that is antiquated and it can't handle the overflow when we get either a tropical storm, a hurricane or heavy rains. And what it does is we wind up getting jet trucks, jet sewage trucks that just pump 24/7 so that the thing doesn't overflow. During Hurricane Hermine, they actually lost it. And I walked through it and I was told that it was contaminated water that ultimately probably found its way into the Gulf and into our intercoastal, although the county denies it. Anyway, it's unacceptable in a city like ours to have that. First time I ever met with Lynn Reeves when I was running, he said, well, it's been like that for 20 years, we can't do anything. I said, well, we're going to try. We've been hitting every county commissioner. June and I saw one of the county commissioners in all places, Sam's Club, on Memorial Day and I pressed the issue. That got us five phone calls and information the next week. Mr. Reeves and I went to the county and I'm very pleased and proud to say that what we brought home was a $2 million agreement. It is out for bid at this point in time. They put the respect, the information is out there. They are going to fix that Seventh Street transfer station. And what they're basically going to do is get a pipe and run it down to Indian Rocks where the main, and make sure I'm saying this right, Mr. Reeves, where the main pump is that deals with all the sewage for this entire city. I realize this isn't pretty, but it's how we get rid of our stuff. Everything's going to go down there. It's going to go into a holding area, a big holding area, and it's going to alleviate the need to be pumping this thing out and alleviate the need to have any overflow. It's taken 20 years for this to happen. We are told that it will be right after Christmas time with the new year. The money has been allocated by the county. It's a $2 million job. I actually thought it was going to be more than that. But a big thank you to June, major thank you to Lynn and major thank you to Virginia Long, who we met in Sam's Club that day. But that sewage treatment plan is going to get fixed and, I'm sorry? Janet Long. And couple that with the work that we're going to do on flooding and I think Seventh Street's going to cease to be a big problem for us in the future. Did I say that right, Mr. Reeves?
Actually, they've awarded the contract. So it's already been through that process. And it may not happen right after Christmas, but in 2020.
It'll happen. If not, I'm going to keep going to Sam's Club till I see our council members there, our county members. So with that, anyway, we got one done over here and it just shows that through perseverance, anything is possible. So we'll continue to fight for the city and fight for what benefits everyone here. All right, if there's nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?